Call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen on Tuesday, September 22, 2020, to order at 6:34 PM. And I entertain a motion to accept the agenda. So moved. Moved by Ms. Curran, seconded by
Second.
Connolly. Because we are remote from one another, we need to do a roll call vote for every vote this evening, I'll remind you. So Lorraine, are you there?
Yeah, I had to unmute, sorry. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
We have to... Okay, so this meeting, before we get started, is in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and the Related Emergency Order. Town of Situate public meetings shall be held remotely until further notice. This meeting will be, is being recorded and can be viewed live on Situate Cable Community Television Facebook Live. And the recorded meeting will be available the next day, tomorrow, on Channel 9 and on YouTube. If you are watching this on Facebook Live, you won't be able to participate in the question and answer period. You'll need to use the link in the comments section to connect via Zoom when we get to the public question and answer period. So please make note of that. If you're on one of the little boxes, you found the Zoom meeting. If you are on Facebook and don't see the link, you can find it at situateMA.gov on the town website, and there'll be a link there. Before we get going with our agenda, I just wanted to make a couple of comments about some important things that are going on in the community. Openings have been posted on several boards and committees on our town website this week. And I want to thank everybody that's already applied and note that applications will be accepted through the end of this week. And we will begin the review and application process in early October. This is an excellent way for you to volunteer to serve the community and to improve Situate. Included in this is a list, in this list is the New Advisory Committee on Equity and Justice. Board of Selectmen is forming this group to ensure that we look at every aspect of how the town conducts business, sets policies, and provides leadership to eradicate oppression, racism, injustice, and violence within our community. While the charge outlines some of the groups and officials we think would be really helpful in this work, please know that the Board will evaluate the strengths and input from all the applicants to determine the final composition of the committee. This means it could end up being more at-large members than outlined in the charge. We won't know until we go through the process. But if you're interested, please come and apply and do so by Friday. The Board will also be discussing this work further at our next meeting, October 6. And that will be an opportunity for us to review and vote on a public statement to further our commitment to the important goals outlined by the committee charge. So I just wanted the Board to be aware of that and the public as well. And with that, I will ask if there are any Zoom-ins or walk-ins, if you could please raise your hand. You can do that by clicking on Participants at the bottom of your screen and then hitting the Raise Hand function. And I see Ellen has raised her hand. So I will figure out how to unmute you. And Ellen, if you could give your name and address, we'd appreciate it.
I'm Ellen Casper, and I live at 120 Gilson Road. And this is the home that my family's owned since 1973. We didn't know a wind turbine was being built on the Driftway until we saw the blades in the Widow's Block parking lot. Being a Prius-driving, recycling, water-conserving, outdoor enthusiast, former Sierra Club REI hiking camping guide and card-carrying AMC member, whose son owns a guide service, I'm all about protecting the environment and was very excited about this new alternative energy source. We visited, took pictures, asked when it was going to be turned on. And as soon as it was turned on, we asked when it would be turned off. For eight and a half years, we've had health and home disturbed by this improperly cited wind turbine, being accused of wanting to kill people's children with carbon, being anti-wind energy, anti-environment, watching families, children, ill, and elderly neighbors suffer, being maligned and mistreated by the town while the BOS and BOH ignored our complaints. And scientific evidence regarding negative health impacts of wind turbines, all the while protecting their own homes from noise, has caused added stress. I've had sleepless nights, had to be out the door by 5:30 AM to get to Boston to safely care for patients for 12-hour shifts, then almost falling asleep on my drive home. This July, after being awakened all through the night by the wind turbine, I ended up in the ER with heart palpitation. Based on continued complaints, the June-through-October abatement plan has never happened. The quality of my life has been compromised by this wind turbine. I did not ask for it to be here. The value of the home that I work hard to maintain has decreased due to this wind turbine. I want to live in this town peacefully in my own home. We Situate industrial wind turbine neighbors are not alone in our complaints. Industrial wind turbines do not belong in close proximity to residences. Falmouth, Kingston, Plymouth, Bourne are just a few local examples of industrial wind turbine disasters. Many other towns have the foresight to avoid them and not be tempted by the dollar sign "green" disguised as environmental green. We are asking the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Health to use your authority to do your job of protecting us.
All right, thank you, Ellen. As you know, the majority of this meeting this evening will be discussing this topic, so we appreciate your statement. Are there any other hands for walk-in Zoom-ins? I'm just gonna scroll down in this, I do not see any. So then I will now move on to the report of the town administrator.
Sure, good evening. A few things tonight. We'll start off, as always, with COVID. Since last Monday, we had eight cases. This is two weeks in a row, eight cases for Situate. Two cases are husband and wife. And a third and fourth case are family members of a positive case from the week before. The remainder, we believe at this point, are college students that are being tested out of state and are being prescribed to our Situate numbers. But those numbers are up. We will see our color change again. The Situate infection rate for the last 14 days was 1.2%. But the numbers are up. They went up the last two weeks to eight. That is the highest it's been in months. So we do need people to continue being vigilant, to continue being safe, to continue wearing masks and doing all the things they did all summer to keep those numbers down. We have had some impacts today from Tropical Storm Teddy. We had some splashover and flooding in our low-lying areas. Kevin and I digged out to Egypt Beach and to Man Hill to see the berm. I took some videos that I'll share with the Board. We would have had washover on Man Hill if we had not done the berm project, the waves were that high. Egypt Beach would not have been a bad, there would have been some splashover. I do want to tell people, if they go down there now, there is a large pile of rocks at the end where the Egypt Beach parking lot is. Those were piled up by the contractor this morning to keep it from flooding. It's in the flat area where they're doing the work and moving the trucks. So that is not the final project that you see in Egypt Beach that was put up today by the contractor to protect their vehicles, protect the beach area. So that'll be finished product in the next couple of days. Just an announcement that I just got in about 15 minutes ago. There will be a public safety training drill at the Public Safety Complex tonight at 10:00. That will involve MedFlight. Again, I just got that in about 10 minutes ago. I'm sorry for the late notice, but they will be doing a training exercise tonight there. Our water ban is still in effect. The Commonwealth has not classified all of Southeastern Massachusetts as being in a severe drought. We have not had any rain in a week. We are still using water at too-high a rate. Our use went down to about 677,000 gallons per day, now from 683,000 gallons per day. That is better, but we do need rain. We need people to continue to conserve, to do more to conserve. Just to give the Board an example, when we put the outdoor water ban on, the water usage dropped about 400,000 gallons a day. In a 31-day month, that's 12 million gallons of water. But people are still watering, people are still using. There is no rain in the forecast for the next week, so we need people to continue to conserve water. Cedar Point started in earnest today. We have some construction out there, the roads closed. That is an 18-month time project. Right now, it is scheduled to be finished in the spring, depending upon the weather. But we will see some construction from that over the next coming weeks and months. Please follow the signs. Again, the Egypt Beach project is ongoing. That should wrap up this week or early next week. My, you know, invite the Board to go down and take a look. The contractor's doing a good job. And again, when you see the videos, you'll see how high the water was going on that beach today. The storm is actually pretty impressive, considering how far off the coast it is. The COA project is ongoing. We are on schedule siding drywall. The start of the brick system is gonna start this week. The brick system for the elevator and the gym is also starting. And the elevator installation is scheduled for the week of October 5. I did send you pictures of some trees today. There's a tree that is right near the new parking lot. It is outside the protected area of the contract work. We've had an arborist look at that. That tree is basically hollow on the inside. It will need to come down. It is a hazard, it's been deemed a hazard by the arborist. So we will be dealing with that over the next several days, early next week. There's also a tree immediately adjacent to this new COA building where some of the limbs are impacting the building. That tree will be trimmed, but it will not be coming down. It'll just be trimmed to get the limbs away from the building. That project is still on time and on budget, so they're doing a good job keeping that up. The athletic field project, we had some volunteers in Labor Day weekend to paint the dugouts. It was a bigger project than they thought, they were unable to complete it. Mark Falvey of MA Falvey Painting has reached out to Recreation. He has offered to complete the project for us. His company will go down and finish that project and do the dugouts for us. So I wanted to thank Mark and his company for that donation. The place looks great. And then when the dugouts are finished, it'll be the crowning touch. The last major part of that project is the remaining storage bin out behind the softball field. And that should start this week or next week. And that should wrap up the project, with the exception of hoping to get some grass growing when the rain comes. But if you haven't been out there, please go out there, it looks fantastic. I see people taking advantage of the walking pass all around there all the time. So it came out great, and I encourage people to use it. Lastly, I just want to let the Board know. On the regional SAW project, the Cohasset Board of Selectmen and SAW Commission had a second joint meeting last week to discuss regional SAW and Cohasset storage needs. Karen, Canfield, Kevin Cafferty, Will Brent, and I were all listening on that Zoom meeting last night. My impression is that Cohasset is pausing the regional plan at this time while they are investigating the needs of Cohasset and the options that Cohasset has short of going to the regional system. They hope to have this report done in a month. I don't know if they will or not, but they hope they will have it done in a month. At this point, I have directed the DPW and the SAW Committee, the SAW Department, to go back to dig out our plans, revise our plans for what we will do if the regional SAW plan does not come to fruition, so that whatever Cohasset's decision is made, we will be ready to go forward with either a plan on our own or a plan on the regional SAW. Last time we talked about regional SAW, I was cautiously optimistic that the regional SAW project was going to be going forward. Based on what I saw last night and the comments from the Cohasset Board of Selectmen and the SAW Commission, I am decidedly less optimistic about the regional SAW project. I'd urge the Board to take a look at the meeting. It should be posted in Situate on the Cohasset webpage. But I urge you to take a look at it and see if you get the same impression that I do. But either way, the SAW Department is preparing plans to put before the Board, no matter which way Cohasset decides to go, so that we can get that capacity we need to eventually bring North Situate into storage and help that business district. Karen, I don't know if you disagree with that interpretation, but that's my report for tonight.
Thanks, Jim. No, it was, it was a disheartening conversation from a... We weren't asked to participate, but we listened, and it was disheartening to listen to the conversation. So yeah, so great, I think that's great, Jim. If you're gonna start looking at alternative opportunities, we need to address this, of course, as quickly as possible. Does the, anyone else on the Board have a question for Jim about his report or anything else? Karen, you're muted.
Hey, Jim, I'll jump in real quick. Are you planning the fall plantings for the trees and shrubbery in front of the library?
If they have trees to plant, yeah, we'll do that. I know Jesse's talked about a couple donations that they've had people talk about. Whenever they're ready to go, Tony, we can get them in.
Yeah, can we follow up with that? Because it's been supposed to happen for a while now. And I know we missed the season and then the drought, and then there was, that path had to go in there. So this fall would be a perfect time to get something in there.
Yeah, it's probably good we haven't planted them yet with the drought. But yeah, I'll follow up the library.
Thanks.
Karen, did you have something?
I did. Jim, could you just clarify the length of the Cedar Point project? You said it's 18 months. But you then said it was gonna be finished in the spring, but I'm assuming that's the spring of 2022?
No, it's an 18-month contract. They have 18 months to complete the job. But their timeline is that they will be finished next spring, before the summer season. But that is really gonna be dependent upon what type of weather we get this winter.
Right, right, thank you. And one more question about brown water. Has it been, have we had as many complaints, or is that getting better again?
It's gotten significantly better since we first, we put well 17A into the reservoir. That dropped the temperature of the reservoir significantly, which helped with the manganese levels. And we had the DEP approval to add the new chemical into the plant. I can get you the numbers, what they look like before and after, but it has significantly lowered the amount of manganese going into the system.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yeah, I was curious on those COVID numbers. Does that include the folks at Wampanoag? Like, I know it's always where people live, whatever, but...
I don't know if it has both of them in there yet, Andrew. I know it would have one of them, but I don't know if it would have both of them. Just from the timing on their tests, I don't know if it's made, it made it into the state system yet. So I know the first one should be in, but I don't know if the second one is or not.
Any other questions from the Board? Jim, I just wondered, are they, they're not actually spraying the grass at the fields? And they're, no, they're supposed to in the fall, but are they doing that?
Well, they'll be doing some slice seeding out there. I don't know if they've started that yet, but it'll be slice seeding and making some repairs. It won't be another whole spraying of the fields. Yeah, there won't be hydroseeding yet.
Okay. All right. Oh, Andrea?
Just one other quick question. So I know there was already a flu shot clinic. Is there gonna, do you know if there's gonna be another one coming up? Because that's gonna be important for our students.
Yeah, I did see a notice of that today, just because it interfered with a meeting that I was supposed to have. I'll find out, we'll make sure we get that out, Andrea.
Okay, great.
Okay, great. All right, we will move on. I do see a hand raised, but the report of the town administrator, I don't normally open up to the public because that could take a lot of time, unfortunately. So we're gonna keep to the agenda right now and move on to our first item, which is to accept a donation of beautification for the Cole Parkway Garden. Lorraine, who will be presenting?
Well, this is just an anonymous donation by a Situate resident in honor of his late wife. We just need to accept the donation.
Okay. Does anyone have the motion? I just realized I didn't even open up our backup, since we don't have much...
I have it.
Okay.
Move to accept a $125 donation from a resident for the Beautification Commission in memory of his wife.
Moved by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Karen. Roll call vote, please. Any further comment? Okay, we'll go to roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Oh, I just lost it. Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Okay, great, the motion has passed 5-0. Thank you so much for that donation. You know, beautification does such a great job in town, so helping them out is very nice. Our 650 is to discuss and vote establishment of an EDC grant program. Nancy Holt will be presenting that on behalf of the EDC. Nancy?
Good evening. The EDC voted at their meeting last night to create a grant program to assist the 79 entities that file room occupancy tax in the town. So at the June 2020 Annual Town Meeting, the town voted to roll back the room occupancy tax from 6% to 4% effective July 1. Unfortunately, the Department of Revenue will not honor the July 1 date because the town meeting was delayed from April to June. They will not honor the rollback until October 1. And this has created some hardship for some of the businesses in town and some of the entities that are affected by this room occupancy tax, especially since nobody was notified until after July 1. So what the EDC has put forth is a grant program just for July, August, and September for up to the 2% difference that entities can apply to them for. Where it's not expected that this program would exceed $10,000, they actually put a cap on it. And they would have to provide proof that they had filed their income tax, their room occupancy tax, and also that they had paid it. So right now, I have a letter that's been approved by the Chairman of the EDC to send out to these entities, and I have a mailing list. So if the Board is amenable to this as well, that would be something that we would hope to have out tomorrow to those entities. Also, I believe that this is something that we can be reimbursed for the coronavirus relief funds for because it was specific to COVID-19 that it's, one, it affects small business, and, two, it was specific to COVID-19. This would not be an issue if our town meeting had been delayed. If we'd been able to hold our town meeting when we were supposed to hold our town meeting, this issue never would have arisen, and it wouldn't have impacted those businesses and entities at all.
Thank you so much, Nancy. Does the Board have any questions? Everyone's shaking up, Mara.
Do we have any type of an estimation as to the extent or interest on behalf of the business owners who will be applying for the grant money, Nance? Do we have any sort of pulse on that?
I think for many of them, it will be something that they had not considered. And I think a lot of them probably weren't even that active during this period because of the restrictions for COVID-19. Expecting to have a huge response to it. There are a couple lodging houses, a hotel, and then the bulk of the rest of them are short rentals.
Okay. And how are we getting the message out if this is approved?
I will, I have a letter that was approved by the EDC Chair today, and I have a list that we received from the Department of Revenue of everyone that's registered. And that will be sent out today. I'm using it tomorrow.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other questions from the Board about this matter? Thank you so much, Nancy, for outlining it. I am excited that EDC has taken the lead to recommend this to us. I mean, everything we can do to help our businesses during this is a good thing, in my view. So are there any, does anyone from the public have a question about the EDC grant program? Don't see any hands. Okay. In that case, I will entertain a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen agree to approve the establishment of an EDC grant program specifically to help with COVID-related issues.
A motion by Ms. Connolly, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Corrin?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-1. Thank you so much for your help with that. Our next, and as anyone that's seen our agenda, the next item will take up the bulk of this meeting. We purposely delayed things that could be delayed so that we could give this the attention that needs to be made. Before we get started, I just wanted to give a little introduction and set the stage, if I may. So as Ellen remarked in the Zoom-in period, the turbine came online in 2012, and the BOS and the BOH have been receiving complaints from residents about the operation ever since. Both noise and flicker nuisances have been reported. Board of Selectmen has commissioned several studies to determine if the turbine is operating within the DEP regulations and town permits. While the studies to date have not shown any violation of the regulation, violation of these rules, the BOS restricted the operation of the turbine in summer months when the wind was blowing under conditions under which most complaints were received. Unfortunately, although complaints declined for a short while, they continue to come in. Epsilon has been hired to review the operations and conduct a study to, again, determine DEP compliance. Tonight, we will hear a presentation about the results. It is my understanding that they will also respond to questions that were submitted in advance by some residents at the end of their presentation. Before I introduce our presenter, I would like to draw the Board's attention to a couple of important facts about this matter. First, it is my understanding, and a new understanding, under Mass General Law, that the Board of Selectmen has the same authority as the Board of Health to determine a public health nuisance. And just because I was not clear on that, and we do have some new members that haven't been part of this conversation, I was wondering if I could ask our town administrator to just walk through that particular and very important authority.
Yeah, so I had a discussion with town council on this. I asked her to look at it, because the statute says one thing, and then the regulations get into a whole bunch of other things. But under the statute, the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Health couldn't make a determination of a nuisance. You would have to have a hearing on that. You wouldn't be able to do it without giving notification to the windmill operator and also an opportunity to cure any violations. But you would have that authority if you chose to exercise it.
Okay, all right. Is everyone clear on that? Any questions about that particular matter? Okay. Thank you, Jim. The other point I want to make is, before we start, is if we determine that the turbine's not in compliance, the town's contract with the operator would require us to notify them of any non-compliance. They do have a cure period. So if you found it not in compliance, you don't get to just say, okay, turn it off forever. Contractually, they have the right to try to fix whatever non-compliance there is. So I just wanted to make that note. Next, I just wanted to walk through a little bit about the presentation and how this meeting can go, because I really would like it to be as productive as possible. I've had a lot of conversations with individuals. Obviously, there's a lot of interest in this topic. At the completion of Epsilon's report, the Board members will be given time to ask their questions about the study, which is how we conduct anything that the Board does. When the members have completed their inquiry, I will open it up to Q&amp;A for the public. And I'd like, I think everybody is comfortable with the, we've already had a little test on the raise hand, but use as again, you'll go to the participants and you hit the raise hand. And I'll do my very best to call you in the order that they come up. There's a lot of people on here, and there's a lot of screens, but I will do my best to do that. I would ask that when we do get to that section, speakers remember that they have five minutes to ask their questions and that we will, at the conclusion of the five minutes, we will move on to make sure everyone has a, Dave, I know, we will talk about your issue in a minute, but we're gonna go with the standard rules. And we want to give everyone an opportunity to ask their questions. At the end of having everyone have their chance, if there's time, we'll circle back and you can ask some more questions. Please direct your questions to the Chair, which is me in this case. If I can't answer your question, then I will absolutely refer to somebody that may know the answer. Let's see. And the first round of these questions, I ask you to really carefully think about it because we're gonna be talking just about the study. So our job on the agenda and for the meeting for tonight is to discuss the report that Epsilon will give to us and come to our conclusions about the information presented to that. At the conclusion of that conversation, if there are other matters not related to the study and the review of the study, the board will have a conversation about whether there's things that we want to discuss, which I suspect we will, but we'll try to put it sort of in Part 1 and Part 2. Part 2 will be things that are outside of the study before us today. I hope that's clear. It goes without saying that the question should stick to the subject matter and remind everyone that they should please comport themselves in a way that is consistent with the public meeting conduct. And I'm sure everyone understands that that means courteous and respectful conversation, which we will all adhere to. And finally, before we launch in, I want to thank Lorraine, Allison, Michelle, Al, and Jim for pulling together the documents, which I will hold up. This is what it looks like in hard copy form. The information that I asked them. There was a long history of this topic, and while not exhaustive, this, my intent was to provide relevant source documents so that we could have an informed discussion. So, you know, if somebody refers to the contract or something, we have those available. If I missed anything, it's entirely my fault. It wasn't meant to be exhausted. And anything related to this topic is obviously already in the public record, but it would have killed about four for us if we tried to print out every one of those. So that was my request. So before we start Epsilon, I just want to see if the board or the town administrator wants to add anything before we launch into Epsilon's presentation. And I don't see any of our hands up. Okay. Well, then I will, I will be happy to introduce, we have Clint Seere and Ryan Callahan from Epsilon. And they are, I'm sorry, was it, Clint, were you doing the presentation?
That's correct.
Okay. We will turn the floor over to you, sir.
Great. Thank you so much, and thank you to the town of Situate for inviting me to present. I'm going to share my presentation here. Could I get confirmation that everyone can see?
Oh, you can see you.
You can see me. Hello, everyone. Let me share my screen.
We are going to spotlight you, Clint, so you will be front and center. There you go.
Okay. Now, can everyone see the first slide of the presentation?
Yes.
I'm getting hit. No, it's awesome. Awesome. Okay. All right. So just a brief introduction. My name is Clint Seere. I work with Epsilon Associates, which is a private environmental engineering and consulting firm located in Maynor, Massachusetts. Epsilon has performed wind energy acoustical work across the US as well as Canada. A little background about myself. I have a bachelor's degree in mechanical engineering with a concentration in acoustics. I have a master's degree in acoustics. And I'm also a registered professional engineer in mechanical engineering in the state of Massachusetts. I'm also a member of the Institute of Noise Control Engineers and the Acoustical Society of America. Okay, so to get started, I'd like to provide a little background on sound levels and terminology, which will be important to understand as I flip through this presentation. This first slide presents a few graphics of typical sound sources that everyone might be familiar with. For instance, there's a lawnmower at three feet. You might experience a sound pressure level of 95 dB. Heavy traffic observed at 300 feet would be around 60 dB. Dishwasher, just in the next room, might be 50. And then a library, under typical circumstances, would be 35 dB. So it's going to be quite quiet, assuming there's no one causing any disruptions. And just as another side note, typical conversation between people at approximately three feet is about 65 dB. So on this next slide, I'm going to introduce a few terms that are going to be used throughout the presentation, referred to as sound level metrics. The L90 is known as the residual background sound level, so which is generally observed to be the lowest sound level that someone observes over a certain amount of time. Statistically, it is the level that has exceeded 90% of the time over some duration. The LEQ is the equivalent sound level, otherwise known as an average, that is over some set time interval. And that interval can range depending on the purpose of the sound level measurement or study that's being performed. The Lmax, by definition, is the maximum sound level that's observed over a given amount of time. However, it's important to understand that the definition of an Lmax that's used throughout this study is different than that true definition. So throughout this presentation, you're going to see this terminology in quotes, Mass DEPLmax. That's the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Lmax as they have defined it for this study. And there's a little definition there. It's the average of the three highest representative 1-second LEQ sound levels. And I'll go into a little bit more detail of what that entails as we go along. So let's give you some background about the Sound Level Measurement Program and the details behind that. To go from the beginning, Epsilon drafted a Sound Level Measurement Protocol, which was originally based on the Mass DEP's 2013 Wind Turbine Noise Study Protocol. In August of 2018, Epsilon had a kickoff meeting with the town of Situate, Situate LLC, as well as David Darty, who became the residential coordinator for this measurement program. At that meeting, we discussed the details of the draft protocol that had been submitted, as well as the sound level measurement locations. And at that meeting, we actually drove to the proposed measurement locations and refined where we were going to place the microphone for the measurements for the study. After that meeting, Epsilon revised that protocol and forwarded it to the town of Situate, who sent it off to Mass DEP for review. In September of 2018, we received a series of comments from the DEP, and we provided some responses to each of those comments and revised the protocol accordingly. That protocol was then sent back to the DEP for review. A couple of months later, we received additional comments from the DEP and then provided some responses to those comments as well. However, the comments did not warrant any revisions to the protocol as it stood at that time. All of the final measurement protocol, along with all comments received by the DEP and those responses are provided in Appendix A of the Epsilon Report. So let's have a look at the measurement locations utilized in the study. This is showing an aerial image. And as you can see here, the Situate Wind Turbine is identified in yellow, and the measurement locations IDed 1, 2, 3, and 4 are represented by the blue dots. The addresses to those homes are off in the left. And in parentheses, you'll see the approximate distance from wind turbine to those measurement locations. So location 1 is the closest measurement location at approximately 650 feet. And the other three locations, 2, 3, and 4, are half a mile or more from the wind turbine. So here are some more details about the field program and the methodology that was followed based on the protocol and the comments received from the DEP. All measurements were going to be five minutes in duration per sample. We were using the fast response on the sound level meter. And all four locations would be measured at simultaneously and attended by Epsilon personnel. So on each measurement survey, we had four folks from the Epsilon team go out and take measurements, one person at each location. Each person was given a field sheet template, if you would, designed to create some consistency for note-taking at each of the locations. Diligent note-taking was critical for this measurement program as we were trying to focus on noise from the wind turbine, as well as any background noise that might be present. So the way that each survey worked was Epsilon performed three back-to-back operational sound level measurements. Now, operational, I mean with the wind turbine operating. And there were three samples, so in total, that's 15 minutes of measurements with the wind turbine on. During these surveys, we were in communication with Situate Wind LLC so that we could have real-time readouts of the wind speed and power at the hub. So what was happening at the wind turbine, as that was very critical to the study. And we'll get some more detail on that with a subsequent slide. Following the operational measurements, once we were all done, we were in communication via cellphone. Said, okay, let's turn off the wind turbine and take some measurements with it totally shut down. So we reached out to Situate Wind LLC. They powered off the wind turbine, and we actually could get visual confirmation at some of the locations on certain nights, confirming that the wind turbine was indeed not spinning at all during these next set of measurements. And then we were performed three more samples of measurements with the wind turbine completely off. So again, that's 15 minutes total with three samples at five minutes apiece. So the protocol outlined some significant conditions, meteorological conditions specifically, as well as these other parameters that were critical for the study. Meteorological conditions outlined were that there could be no presentation. It could not be raining during these measurements. Ground-level wind speeds had to be less than 5 meters per second or 11 miles per hour, which is per ANSI standards for valid sound level measurements. The wind direction, based on input from residences, we were targeting west-southwest wind, so wind coming from that direction. Whereas if you can recall the location figure, the locations are generally downwind of that wind direction. And that south, excuse me, west-southwest wind corresponds to 247 degrees from north. But the protocol allowed for a plus or minus 45-degree window, so we were not restricted to that specific wind direction down to the degree. The timeframe, we were scoped, and as per the DEP's review, to perform measurements on four separate nights. And again, that was with four individuals from Epsilon. Go down, there are four separate nights that deemed appropriate for measurements, specifically during quiet nighttime hours between 1:00 AM and 4:00 AM. So the measurements could not commence prior to 1:00 AM, and they had to be completed before 4:00 AM. The purpose of that is generally to capture those quiet periods at nighttime where ambient is very low, and you create a larger impact from any sound that might be coming from the wind turbine at that time of night. So for hub height conditions, there were two key thresholds that we were targeting here. Again, this is based in the measurement protocol. The first one itemized there is hub height wind speeds greater than or equal to 9 meters per second, which corresponds to about 20 miles per hour. And that corresponds to the maximum sound output condition. So we would expect the wind turbine to create as much sound as it possibly can under this wind speed. So that was our, one of the two conditions that we were trying to target. The second condition itemized there is 5 to 10 meters per second. Now, that was based on a series, a log of complaints that were submitted to the town of Situate. And so that second threshold was another target that we were going to achieve. And just for reference purposes, 5 meters per second corresponds to about 11 miles per hour, and 10 meters per second is about 22 miles per hour. So the terminology that's going to be used through this presentation is maximum sound output corresponding to this wind speed and the complaint region corresponding to these wind speeds at the hub height. So here's a table showing the nights that we got out there. Now, these nights were, it turned into a reality based on diligent weather forecasting performed by Epsilon and other parameters that were controlling these dates. You can see that there's quite a spacing between each of these dates, but it's generally a result of perhaps inadequate meteorological conditions or staffing and equipment unavailability, whereas we had to have four staff folks from Epsilon, as well as the equipment ready to go out and take these measurements. Or the other factor was the wind turbine may have been down for maintenance. So measurements were performed in April, July, October, and December of 2019. That gives a pretty fair spread over the course of the year. And then this rightmost column identifies that hub height condition that was targeted on each of the nights. So in April, we saw maximum sound output conditions. July, we were targeting the complaint region. So those thresholds will come up later on here. Just briefly, want to discuss the measurement equipment that was used for this program. Epsilon deployed Larson-Davis Model 831 sound level meters connected to digital audio recorders, the Roland R05 units. In addition to the sound level meters placed at each of the measurement locations, at one location, we did deploy a wind speed instrumentation at location 3, which was at 122 Gilson Road. The image that you're seeing on the bottom right is an Atmos-type sensor deployed. We also used Hobo equipment. Now, the purpose of this was to measure the ground-level wind conditions for the entire period that night. So every night that we were out there, we had one of these with us to capture those conditions over the course of the night that we were there. This equipment was deployed just at location 3, but at the other three locations, each person at Epsilon had some handheld equipment so that they could get local readings of the wind conditions at their specific site. Although generally speaking, the location 3 wind equipment was deemed to be representative of the area. So in addition to the equipment deployed by Epsilon, we were also relying on information at hub height. And that was from the SCADA system. Now, SCADA, SCADA means Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. This is fairly generic system that's used with wind turbines. As mentioned, we were in communication on each night with Situate Wind LLC to get those real-time readings at hub height so that we could confirm that we were capturing the appropriate conditions. In addition to those readouts, we, Situate Wind, provided us with the logged data over the course of the evening. So they provided that to us, and that helped us with our data processing and evaluation efforts. Speaking of the evaluation, we'll now get to the discussion of the results as well as the evaluation. I first want to talk about, a little bit more about the protocol and what that evaluation really entailed. So the key points was for us to evaluate the Mass DEP noise policy, which from a broadband limit, limits a sound source to increase the ambient by no more than 10 dB. For this specific project, as we got the feedback from Mass DEP on the protocol, we're using the, in quotes, Mass DEPLmax, which is wind turbine attributable. And we're comparing that to the measured ambient L90. So that background L90, which is again the residual background. In addition to the broadband evaluation, it was required that we evaluate for pure tones that might be caused by the wind turbine. And pure tones, that's an evaluation of octave band data, which gets down to sound level frequencies. By definition, from DEP, that was, we were required to evaluate every one-minute block of sound levels, of LEQ sound levels. So for each five-minute sample, there were five periods that had to be evaluated for pure tones. And for, well, we evaluated both the operational measurements when the wind turbine was on, but also the ambient measurements to see if there were any pure tones that were in the background, in the background sound, not attributable to the wind turbine. So by definition, the Mass DEP noise policy definition, a pure tone is identified when the octave band sound level is at least 3 decibels greater than the sound level is uh at least three decibels greater than the sound level in the two neighboring octave bands. Alright, so I'll jump right into the results of night one, which was in April of twenty nineteen, where we captured or targeted maximum sound output conditions. Again, that was wind speeds at the hub at least nine meters per second. So this table here is actually extracted right from the Epsilon report. Um, and it's a nice summary of the meteorological and wind turbine conditions that were actually captured on that night. So the first entry of the table is the average hub height wind speed during both operational periods and ambient periods. Just to reiterate, the operational periods were when the wind turbine was on. Ambient is after the wind turbine was shut off. So we can see here that the wind speed at the hub was around fifteen meters per second, thirty four miles per hour, if you would. During both sets of measurements, therefore, that that's a very consistent type of conditions, which is really what we were targeting here. We want a kind of an apples to apples comparison, just with the wind turbine on, wind turbine off. Next row is is identifying the average wind turbine output. That's in in kilowatts. So for this particular night, the average output for the wind turbine was fifteen hundred KW over the operational period. So that that's that's the maximum output from this particular wind turbine. During the operate, uh, excuse me, the the ambient measurements when the wind turbine shut off, as we would anticipate, the the wind term is not producing any power at that time. Ground level wind speed, the average was uh about three to five meters per second. That is within the threshold of of valid sound level measurement readings. In the wind direction, uh, we measured to be west southwest. So all of these conditions meet the parameters as identified in the the protocol. One thing to note about night one, however, is that the the winds were actually very strong at the hub and at the treetops. Again, at the the hub height, which is an eighty meter hub height, uh, the winds were thirty four miles per hour. And that, the the strong winds actually still corresponded down to the tree level, perhaps not at the ground. The ground level showed relatively reasonable uh winds. However, the the trees were still rustling pretty significantly, which made that generally difficult to identify or to hear the wind turbine at certain locations at certain times. So here we've tabulated the results. Um, the the top table is the operational results when the wind turbine was on, and this is a by location. And these these values are presented in the report, but we've copied them here to to um to convey the the results and the procedure in the evaluation. So for example, at at location one fifty one Driftway, that's location one, the highest one second LEQ sound level that was deemed attributable to the wind turbine was fifty three DBA during the first five minute measurement at this location. During the second measurement, it was fifty eight, during third measurement fifty seven. And based on the definition of the Mast EP L max, we can assign a fifty six, which is an average of these three sound levels. At location two twenty six Hughes Road, um, the wind turbine was actually inaudible during all operational conditions. And this this could very well be a factor of the the uh tree rustling, given the the stronger winds higher above the ground. Therefore, we could not assign a a sound level at at this particular location on this particular night. One twenty two Gilson Road here, the L max on that night was a fifty six and at thirty four Driftway, we have fifty four. The table below shows the ambient L ninety results when the wind turbine has been shut down. At one fifty one Driftway, the first result was fifty one DBA, the second forty nine, forty nine on the third. And the lowest L ninety measurement out of these three was a forty nine. So that's what we've assigned as the the background reading for for this particular night at that location. And the same goes for these three locations. You can see that all these sound levels here are the minimum in each row. Here we have a table uh presenting the evaluation for all four locations on this first night. To reiterate, this was under maximum sound output conditions that greater than nine meter per second threshold. The Mast EP L max has been copied into this table here in this column. The lowest L ninety background here in column two. And then here we just take uh a a subtraction, a simple subtraction between the L max and the L ninety and calculate a difference. And evaluation, um, if that difference is less than or equal to ten ten DBA, then we deem that that location at that particular night is in compliance. So here we have a a difference of seven at one fifty way, excuse me, one fifty one Driftway. And so that location is deemed in compliance on this night. Uh, at at twenty six Hughes Road, again, we could not assign a an L max on this particular night. So we we could not come to a conclusion on on compliance at that location. One twenty two Gilson, there was a difference here demonstrated five decibels. So that location is in compliance, thirty four Driftway. Difference of one, and that location is also showing compliance. I do have a note at the bottom of this table, which is important, um, moving forward. Although there are whole values, whole decimal values shown in the table, all calculations were performed with additional precision. So visually, the the math might not make sense, but with additional precision, it it does come to to these values. Okay, night two. This was in July twenty nineteen, and we were targeting the complaint region conditions, which was uh between five and ten meters per second at the hub. Here again is that meteorological and wind turbine condition summary table on the second night. The average hub height wind speed during the operational measurements around eight meters per second. Consistently after the wind turbine had been shut off, the wind speed at the hub was about the same. And just for conversion, uh, that's about eighteen miles per hour. The average wind turbine output under this uh lower wind speed was eight hundred, about eight hundred KW. And again, after the wind turbine shut off, it's not producing any power, so that's a zero. Ground level winds, well within the measurement threshold, wind direction also met the target um for protocol conditions. Here we're presenting the results from night two. Again, the top table is with the wind turbine operating. We can see that the the Mast EP L max on this particular night ranged from forty two at one twenty two Gilson to fifty one decibels at one fifty one Driftway. Table below is showing the results after the wind turbine was shut down. We have minimum L nineties ranging from thirty seven to forty one. And here's the eval evaluation for night two at at each of the locations. At one fifty one Driftway, again, the L max was uh deemed to be fifty one decibels, the background thirty seven, and that provides a difference of thirteen decibels. Therefore, we have a no in this column. That that's that's not demonstrating compliance as defined by the Mast EP. Given that thirteen is greater, showing a greater difference than than ten DBA. At the other three locations, however, locations two, three and four, the difference between the Mast EP L max, the wind turbine operating and the the measured background after it was shut off is eight decibels or less. Therefore, the three of those locations are demonstrating compliance on that particular night. Night three, this was in October of twenty nineteen, and we're back to maximum sound output conditions being targeted. So again, that was above uh or at least nine meters per second. You can see here uh during the operational measurements, the average wind speed was around ten meters per second and very consistent after the wind turbine was shut down. Ten meters per second is about twenty two miles per hour. The average turbine output were about fourteen hundred KW on that particular night and then zero after the wind turbine was powered down. Ground level wind speeds well within the threshold and the wind direction was deemed to be southwest, which was in our plus or minus forty five degree window. So night three was showing uh to to meet all the conditions required. Instead of bogging down the presentation with too many numbers, I am skipping those results tables and going right to the evaluation for night three, and I'll be doing the same for night four. But this does summarize the Mast EP L maxes uh measured on night three at each of the four locations with the wind turbine operating. L ninety after the wind turbine was shut down. And then our difference or between the four locations, a maximum difference of three DBA. Therefore, all four locations are demonstrating compliance, again, under the maximum sound output conditions. Night four, this is the last night of measurements, and this was in December of twenty nineteen, under the complaint region. So again, we were targeting two nights under the max output and two nights under this complaint region where the hub height winds were between five and and ten meters per second. So here's a summary of those conditions. The average hub height wind speed during the operational measurements was about eight meters per second, again, eighteen miles per hour. During the ambient measurements, however, after the wind turbine had shut down, the the wind speed at hub height seemed to drop off um quite timely, uh, actually a- after the operational measurements were per- performed. So the average over the the background measurements was five meters per second or eleven miles per hour. What's important to know is we do have a no on under this this category here because um per the the Mast EP comments, the difference between wind speeds under these two conditions should have been within two meters per second. And the difference between these periods was actually two point nine. So that didn't quite meet the the parameters that were were uh defined. And uh I'll go into a little bit more detail in in how we we worked worked with that condition in the evaluation. Got the wind turbine output of about eight hundred KW here. And again, it was off during the ambient. Ground level winds were very good. The wind direction defined as west northwest, but still within that forty five degree window that we were looking for. So here's the evaluation table for for the last night. A- as I mentioned, I I highlighted the difference between the hub height winds during the operational measurements and the winds during the ambient measurements, really quite a reduction between uh or during the ambient measurements. Therefore, in instead of using the lowest L ninety sound level that was measured in those three samples that night, we used the the L ninety that was closest in time to the operational measurements as opposed to the minimum. And that was deemed to be more representative than the minimum minimum L ninety, whereas the conditions at the hub were uh closer to the conditions experienced during the operational measurements. However, the L ninety presented in this table is slightly conservative because we did experience some changes uh in the hub height wind speeds. So the results in this table, uh, we're we're showing the the Mast EP L max, again, with the wind turbine operating. The ambient L ninety after it was shut off and the difference. And here on this this particular night, we're showing a difference of nine DBA across all all four locations. But that is less than or equal to ten DBA. Therefore, all four locations are demonstrating compliance on this particular night. So in conclusion, um, we we performed a a very detailed Mast EP broadband compliance evaluation. This table summarizes what what we just worked through with all those those tables and numbers. Again, we were targeting two specific hub height conditions, one under the maximum sound output with greater than or equal to nine meters per second, and then the complaint region of of winds between five and and ten meters per second. All locations on all four nights complied under the max sound output condition. So that that was two nights that we measured these conditions and we demonstrated compliance at all four locations. Under the uh complaint region condition, three of the four demonstrated compliance on both of those nights. One location, one fifty one Driftway, did demonstrate a non-compliance um on one of the two nights during during those measurements. Mast EP pure tone compliance was, of course, evaluated and all of the details are are provided in the measurement report. Based on that evaluation, all locations demonstrate compliance uh wi- with the pure tone condition. And we would conclude that the the wind turbine does not cause any pure tones at the locations that that measurements were performed. So that essentially includes the the bulk of the the presentation of the valuation report. At this time, I I suppose we can go into the the Q and A session. I do have, or or I did receive some questions in advance that were forwarded to me uh to to Epsilon from the town, and I'd like to step through those and provide some responses before we open it up to the public, if that's alright. So the first question received, uh, I I'll number them as they're written on the screen here. In one point zero executive summary paragraph four, uh, in quotes, the residence one fifty one Driftway is six hundred and fifty feet to the northeast of the wind turbine. And it is Epsilon's understanding that the owners of the residence were recipients of mitigation funds by Situate Wind LLC, end quote. What is the source of this information and why do you feel it is appropriate to be included in a sound data gathering and evaluation report? Uh, to answer that question, the cited statement is based on information from from the town of Situate and Situate Wind LLC. In some cases of of wind energy developments, landowners um agree to accept potential sound level impacts or or otherwise from the operation um of a wind project by form of a signed waiver and or payment. So this this information was considered relevant for the report, given that measurements were performed at this particular residence. Question two, the report was submitted anonymously. Who takes responsibility for its content and accuracy? The report was was presented by Epsilon Associates, Inc. Question number three, why does the post-measurement analysis avoid showing the occurrence of non-compliance at one fifty one Driftway? As you you may recall from from this presentation, um, we we did demonstrate and highlight the the non-compliance at this particular location on one of the measurement nights. And the report actually identifies that it clearly is clearly stated in in several locations in the report, and I I do have those those pages if if uh clarification is needed. Question four, why is there non-compliance with ANSI S twelve point nine part three in excluding DBA corruption from audible sounds colon insects, tree frogs and leaf rustle by excluding octave bands from two thousand hertz and identify with DBA and S? So this question is pertaining to an ANS weighting per per ANSI standards based on these these high frequency type sounds. Measurements with the wind turbine operating were performed and immediately followed by ambient measurements as as previously discussed in in the presentation. With the wind turbine shut down. So tho- those measurements were performed quite consecutively. With with these measurements being so close in proximity, an apples to apples and excuse me, an apples to apples comparison is made without without adjusting the data further. So ANS weighting in this case is is really a gratuitous procedure. Oops, apologize, skipping ahead here. Question number five, why did Epsilon not comply with ANSI S twelve point nine slash ANSI S one point thirteen for instrument quality audio recordings and substitute low quality MP three audio files in lieu of sound recording option calibrated wave files as the Larson Davis eight thirty one meter is capable of recording. To answer that question, audio recordings were performed for purposes of source identification when listening back to the recordings. The monitoring protocol provided no specifics on the format in which the the audio recordings were collected. and the the language in the original protocol drafted by by Epsilon that was reviewed by multiple parties was the following. In quotes, "Audio recordings will be collected for all sampling periods," parentheses, "both optional," excuse me, "operational and ambient," and parentheses, "for quality assurance slash quality control purposes using external audio recorders connected to each sound level meter." Question number six, explain the inconsistency between SCADA files and with sound measurement logs for the turbine on and turbine off ambient. The ambient L ninety are too high by including turbine noise contributions. As certainly discussed in the presentation, the ambient sound level measurements were performed only when the wind turbine was was entirely off. So the the wind turbine was not operating during any of the ambient measurements. Question number seven, we've only got a small handful left here. In the document Sound Level Compliance Monitoring Protocol, October 18, 2018. So this is referring to the the protocol that's included as appendix A of the Epsilon Report. Why is there a contradiction between the use of L E Q in the section Documentation of Compliance and the use of L max in the established Current Wind Turbine Noise Study Protocol Generic, which is attached to those protocols? Please look at the attached communication from Dan DeSalvio dated September 25, 2018, addressed to David Darty and Karen Canfield. Even the representative from the MASTA E P didn't know why L E Q is being specified and requested that copy of the MASTA E P generic protocols to be attached. The MASTA E P provided comments on the draft protocol to the town on September 18, which which is included in the Epsilon Report. And comment number four reads as follows, in quotes, "The MASTA E P monitoring method used for recent wind turbine monitoring programs is based on a maximum sound level L max. This L max is represented by the average of the three highest one-second L E Q turbine on values and compared to a baseline turbine off L ninety sound level to determine compliance with the MASTA E P noise policy," end quotes. This is further clarified in a set of comments received by the D P on October 31, which read in quotes, "The highest one-second L E Q from each five-minute sampling period will be averaged to create a single L max for that sampling site under the select wind conditions, i.e., the highest one-second L E Qs to be averaged cannot be from within the same five-minute sampling period or represent different operating conditions." The W T N S P, which is referring to the Massachusetts Protocol, describes this procedure in detail, end quotes. So, direction from the Massachusetts D P, that that's where the the evaluation procedure was was defined. Question number eight, since you used L E Q in determining the L max, why didn't you apply a six to 11 D B correction factor to the L E Q as calculated in the Massachusetts Study on Wind Turbine Acoustics, February 2, 2016, which said study was co-authored by Epsilon Associates? The calculations, as as certainly stated in in the presentation here, the the calculation procedures, again, were defined in the the protocol as instructed by the MASTA E P, so we followed the procedure based on their guidance for this this study. Question number nine, why wasn't there any testing performed on night one, April 19, 2019, at location two, 26 Hughes Road? Only three locations were tested instead of four as the contract requires them. So perhaps this question was actually answered in the the presentation. This is referring to the location where the wind turbine was actually not specifically audible on that that particularly that particular night. So although no conclusion was identified in the report, in the evaluation, measurements were in fact performed at that location. So just to to reiterate, there were there were measurements performed at all four locations and on all four nights. So the the details of of night one are are found in in the report. Question 10, this is the last one. There are three parts, however. So I'll I'll step through each individually. They're all in regards to night four testing, which was on December 6, 2019. So this was the the last night of measurements. First question, explain why table 617, which is a table referenced from our our report, the values of L E Q for 122 Gilson Road were not properly averaged to show the value of 41 instead of 40? As as identified in the the presentation when I was discussing the evaluation tables, the calculations and averages were performed with a greater precision than shown in the tables. Only whole decibels are are presented there. Second part of the question is, explain why in table 618, the lowest value of L ninety is is not used so as to be in accordance with the MASTA E P generic protocol document found in the report in appendix A? Please note the corrected values in the attachment. I I haven't provided the attachment in this presentation, of course. But to respond to that question, which I did go into some detail in during the the presentation, but as described on page 616 of the Epsilon Report, the hub height wind speed dropped fairly substantially between the operational measurements and the ambient measurements after the wind turbine had been turned off. The difference in those wind speeds was about three meters per second, which exceeded the condition identified by the the MASTA E P of plus or minus two meters per second between those two sets of measurements. As further described on the next page in the report, the ambient sound levels do not provide, as as measured, do not provide an apples to apples comparison to the the levels that may have been present during operational measurements where when the wind speed at hub height was was considerably higher. So using the minimum measured L ninety sound level in the evaluation would be overly conservative and and does not meet the the protocol. So therefore, the the L ninety, the background measured during the first five-minute period of those background measurements closest to the operational measurements at each of the four locations was used in the evaluation and and presented in the report in that manner. So last part of the question, note that in amended table 620, by using the proper values, noncompliance to the noise regulation is found at all four locations. Again, the the attachment isn't shown here, but to to reiterate, the the reason for that discrepancy perhaps or mathematical confusion is is based on the fact that the calculations are performed with additional precision, and that's just not presented in the table. It's just whole decimal values that are shown. Okay, so that that is all I have. I guess I will turn it back over to you, Karen.
Great. Thank you so much, Clint. If you want to stop sharing so we can see
Certainly.
the rest of the board, that's great. Thank you. That was, you know, I have to say this, you know, I'm not an engineer, and it was a little overwhelming trying to review all of this, and a lot of the questions I had you did you did address. So thank you for explaining it so that we could understand it. I know there are. It it's great. So what we'll do now is I will open it up to the board. I'm sure there are some questions, and we'll 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 keep it to the board for now, and hopefully it'll answer a lot of the questions that the residents may have. So who would, is there a a member of the board that would like to begin? I'm gonna, there we go. Everyone's muted. Everyone's hiding. Anyone want to start? I'm happy to if you, oh, okay, Mr. Vignani.
Sure. Clint, thanks for the presentation. A a couple observations and just questions. The the ambient noise calculation was based on the minimum, but yet the max was based on the average. What is the, what's the rationale behind that? I mean, it seems to be more conservative. Why is that the case that you're averaging the highest ones but not the lowest ones?
Sure. Again, that was really based on the direction from the the MASTA E P. I I don't believe that we necessarily needed to use the 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 lowest ambient. However, it it is a conservative evaluation, so that that would provide the largest delta that we could realize. But but the averaging procedure was was defined by the the MASTA E P, so that that's that is what we followed for this program.
Is that typical? Is that what, is that the typical D E P protocol is to to for follow that calculation of averaging the max and minimizing the the ambient?
I I think for wind turbine projects specifically, I I believe the answer is yes.
Okay. I guess my my observation is, you know, day four had all four of those measurements very close to the limit at nine, but it seems to me that day four was was kind of not ideal testing conditions and probably should be eliminated from, you know, probably eliminated from the whole calculation. If if you had that huge drop in wind and had to make an adjustment to the norm to try and pull back the closest ambient period to the, you know, to the to the maximum measurements. I don't know, I just think that that one is less less reliable than the other in the testing periods, is one of the questions. My my other question is, on day two, we did find that there was a noncompliant period at location one. So what what does that mean? So it was compliant on the other, potentially two or three calculations, but there was a noncompliant reading. How does that, how does that translate into somebody evaluating whether this wind turbine in totality is compliant or not compliant?
Right, so measurements can could be performed on numerous numerous nights, and and the the results are, I don't believe, would be precisely the same every single night because the conditions are are changing, which is why the results shown at at each location are are different in in each of those scenarios. That particular night where we did see a delta of of plus thirteen, that was a a combination of of very low ambient conditions and and fairly significant contribution from the wind turbine, and it's not particularly surprising the the contribution of the wind turbine, given its proximity to to the wind turbine itself.
I understand that, but I I think in totality, as we as we sit back and try and evaluate whether this is meeting D E P regulations or not, we do have a day at a test where it did not at one of the locations. And how how have you seen other towns factor that into their analysis? I mean, I mean, if you average that thirteen with the other readings of that the other four days, then it would be under it. But there is still a red mark on the analysis that says that that one location is not compliant. So who, you know, is it one of those scenarios where if there's one noncompliant, the whole thing is not compliant? Or do towns look at it differently than that? I'm just trying to figure out how we should take your testing and the data that came out and showing, you know, granted, it was seven the first time and three the next time, but it was thirteen on that second day. So how do we, how do we register that?
Sure, sure. So the the MASTA P D P policy is is tied very closely to the ambient sound levels, and and that's one of the controlling factors. You you have sound coming from the the wind turbine itself, but then you have this other moving target of of what is ambient. So as as that goes up and down, that changes on a on a nightly basis and and sometimes in in a given moment. However, if if noncompliance is demonstrated on a a specific night, there there's no reason necessarily to say that that wouldn't happen on another night, even though we also demonstrated compliance on on three other nights. You, I I believe you you do tend to lean towards the fact that noncompliance can be demonstrated at at a specific location.
Yeah, and I I am. If we were to take these results and give them, okay, we did this independent testing. Do you find this windmill, wind turbine, excuse me, compliant or not? How would they read those results with that one red red mark on it? Would they say, no, that's just an anomaly, and and you had, you know, thirteen or or eleven other measurements or fifteen other measurements that were compliant? Or would they say, no, you 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 missed it on this one, therefore it's not?
It it's difficult to say how the D P would respond to it. Likely, a a lot of credit would be given to the the noncompliant demonstration that that was performed. However, it might just be simply up to a conversation between the town and and D P. I think that in this case, or in a case with with other towns, it it varies depending on on what kind of conclusion that the town could come to.
Thank you.
That's a Tony. Oh, sorry, before I ask, I just want to, while we're on that subject, before I ask for other comments, this may be a question on the contract, or I'm not sure who the question's for. So if if we determine one data point is not compliance, I guess I'm just following up on Tony's question is, how do we answer what the threshold is that becomes noncompliance so that we can notify the wind company that they need to do something? Do you, do you understand my question? I don't know if it's for Jim, or is that just something we need to follow up on? Okay, may I think that we'll put that in the follow-up category?
That's going to have to go to the follow-up category. I mean, we can notify them of the testing results. I'm sure they already have them. Tell them they had a noncompliance and ask actually what was occurring that night when they had the noncompliance. But it's probably going to be the follow-up category.
Okay, I have a bunch of questions, but I'd like to invite other board members to go first. Anyone who's ready? Anyone have any questions? You have them all. Mr. Goodrich?
I'll let Ms. Conlon first.
We'll refer to Ms. Conlon. Oh, wait.
First of all, how were the location? Am I muted?
No, you, so we're speaking Situate there for a second. Yes.
Am I on? Okay, um, first of all, how how were these locations selected? And number two, were any of the residents actually at any of the tests while they were being performed?
Okay, yeah, the the measurement locations, I believe, were were based on communication with the residents residences and the and the town. So I believe that they were primarily targeted at at receipt of complaints. So those were not initially selected by Epsilon. Now, that was a based on complaints. As far as the measurements themselves and and homeowner participation, I I believe there were at least two nights where I was accompanied by Mr. David Darty at his home. And I I believe that there was another resident, perhaps at 26 Hughes Road, which who who did step out and speak with our our folks. Otherwise, I I do not believe that anyone else participated in the measurements.
Okay, thank you. Um, one other question. How many of these types of studies have you done, Epsilon done? And have have any of the studies resulted in operations being changed or in any way by the results of a study?
Okay, yeah, so so I haven't performed any Massachusetts-specific post-construction compliance programs. I've performed programs outside of the state state of Massachusetts, so this is a relatively unique case. I've performed programs outside of the state of Massachusetts, so this is a relatively unique case. I believe Epsilon as a whole may have a bit more experience in that. Post construction in Massachusetts, but also across the United States. As far as. The the next steps, what kind of steps does the town take? It's really up to the town and it's a case by case. Decision to make. So unfortunately, I cannot speak from from any specific experiences to share what what the result was. I'm not sure if my colleague Ryan Callahan, who's also on the phone, could perhaps add some more context to that. Brian, go ahead and chime in if you can assist.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can?
Yes, I I've performed quite a few post construction. Sound level compliance tests as we refer to them as, and. Some of them do result in curtailments being implemented. It's not, it's not our decision to make, we simply measure the sound levels, report the sound levels. And then and then that. Decisions are made based based on on that information. So I am aware of other towns that have implemented curtailments based on time of day. Some technologies exist to. Slow the turbine blades down and therefore make them quieter. So there are several options that are presented. Based on those results.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Goodrich?
Yes, I kind of want to follow up on that. So how often do you see? I know you've done a lot of work out in Iowa, in Colorado, in Pennsylvania. How often do you get a report that you say that a wind turbine is out of compliance?
Well, in in most other jurisdictions across the country. Sound level limits are. Not tied to a background sound level as they are in Massachusetts. So you have a definitive. Sound level that that you are comparing the wind turbine sound to. And therefore it's a very repeatable, very definitive. Target, if you will, in Massachusetts. Due to the mass DEP noise policy being based on. The existing ambient L ninety sound level. You really have a moving target, so so on a given night. You may have a very quiet ground level condition and it gets very quiet. And we did see that as Clint showed in his presentation. Where on the night where we're showing noncompliance, the the ambient sound level was was quite low down into the in the thirties. And then when the turbine was on. The turbine. Is only capable of making a certain amount of sound and it tops out at a certain level. So the the delta driven sound limits in Massachusetts are very unique. And due to that, we don't often find noncompliance in other areas unless unless they have been. Sighted. Very close to homes and haven't done good pre construction sound studies.
So you don't, you've never issued a report outside of Massachusetts or anywhere else that? Turbine's been out of compliance? That your company's never said, hey, this one's out of compliance? Hundred percent everyone's been in compliance?
No, I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's true. I don't, I don't know the the full history of everyone at our company. We've done a. Quite a few of these over the last, you know, decade plus and. The ones I've been involved with, the Massachusetts ones certainly have more. Issues and have led to more noncompliance due to the changing background. The ones I've been involved with out of state typically do show that they that they comply.
So do you think, and I'm just trying to see if we're. So difference. Would this turbine be approved in Iowa or some of these other states you've worked in?
Sound level limits are. Very by an incredible margin, so in Massachusetts, if you have an ambient sound level of twenty five, then. Then your limit is thirty five, which is. The sound of the inside of a library, as Clint mentioned. Other jurisdictions, their limits are forty five, fifty, fifty five, sixty. They're, they're, they range. They cover the full gambit, so. I guess I can't really answer your question, would it not work because, you know?
Sir, I mean, I'm asking for your expertise. I'm looking at some of these decibel, you know, there's the L max and most of them are. You know, forty five and some are fifty, some are sixty. You know, you've done lots of projects, is this? For those other places around, is this normal? Is that is that higher? I mean, isn't it normally forty, forty five? I'm just trying to get a sense of how different. We are if, or maybe we're not, maybe this is totally normal. But. You're next in this, so how different?
Yeah, it's not, I wouldn't say that it's it's different, you know, the the sound a wind turbine makes is. We're very familiar with and have measured on. Many, many different states, it's really tied to the distance away from the wind turbine. So at the at the distance that we're looking at for location one for the testing. That that is a, that's a pretty close distance, I would say, and one of the closest that I have seen personally. So I would say that's a little abnormal. But as far as the sound levels we're seeing at the other locations and the other distances, I would see that's fairly routine from from my experience.
So what distances do you normally see? I mean, this guy, I don't. I'm new on this board, so I'm trying to come through all this as much as I can, I wasn't here for some of these. And I was just trying to do my own research on how far back setbacks normally are. And I couldn't find any other jurisdiction. Under a thousand feet or what, six fifty here? You know, you've done projects all over the place or seen them. How often do you see a turbine six hundred and fifty feet away?
I have not encountered that. In other jurisdictions, typically the setbacks are, like you said, a thousand feet, maybe fifteen hundred feet. Sometimes they're tied to a sound level and not. A hard distance, I've seen that as well. So there's really no catchall. One size fits all to it.
The other scenario that that might. You might see a residence at that proximity to a wind turbine is if they're, they were. Least perhaps by by the project. So they're under some form of agreement to be a quote unquote participant in the project.
Got it, okay. Going back on another question on the. Difference between using an MP three or a WAV file. I know you were saying that there's no, the DEP has no standard for that. But does it, does it actually matter? Could those numbers be manipulated using a loss list versus a compressed format?
The. For the purposes that the audio recordings. Were collected was just simply for listening to. To what the sound was during that particular measurement. As far as the the numbers go, the sound levels themselves, that that makes. Absolutely no impact on those numbers presented.
Okay. That's it for now, I think I had one more, but I forgot, so I'll I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Ms. Karen, do you have questions?
I do, thank you. And thank you. For a great presentation, very thoughtful. I actually had several of those same questions that Karen and Andrew brought up, so I won't. Repeat those, but one, and this is just for my own edification, because one of the votes that the board took. A couple of years back was to turn off the turbine between. The hours of eleven PM and six AM when the wind speeds were less than ten miles per hour. So I'm having a hard time converting your your wind speeds to miles per hour, is there? Can you give me a quick, you know, what is eight point two? Meters per second, you know, how do I convert that as I look at this? Because I want to make sure, you know, we've been. It's been claimed that we haven't been compliant with that edict and I want to make sure that we have been, so. Can you help me with that math?
The, yeah, the conversion from meters per second to miles per hour is a multiple. Multiplication of two point two essentially. So one meter per second is equal to two point two miles per hour. For a very rough estimate, it's about twice the the value in miles per hour.
Okay. So I guess then my other question would be, if we were evaluating that, why weren't we measuring during nights when the wind speed was less than ten miles per hour?
There. Less than ten miles per hour?
Yeah, because that, you know, and Tony, you were on the board then as well, so I know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I went through some of the material that we had and I thought that we put. Forth, you know, to stop the operation between eleven PM and six AM. When wind speeds were less than ten miles per hour, based on the data that the Board of Health had collected from the residents. So that's why I, you know, I thought part of this study was to go back and make sure that we were also complying with that. Vote that the board had made.
That's separate.
You think that's separate?
Yeah, we didn't ask them to comment on our mitigation.
Well, that was a miss, okay.
Well, no, but tomorrow's point is. What she's saying is that we wanted to make, you know, that's, we shut it down because the mutations were bad. We tasked Epsilon with assessing the conditions. Yeah, why didn't it correlate to? To the conditions where we got complaints, you know what I'm saying? Is it because of the protocol that DEP requires?
No, the complaint region conditions as outlined in the presentation. That was a five meter per second to ten meter per second threshold. Now, five meters per second is about eleven miles per hour, so not not quite as low as as the the numbers you're discussing here. But that range was defined based on a complaint log that that we did receive. So that that was that was specifically designed around complaints.
Oh, good. Go ahead, Ms. Conlon.
Karen, thanks for saying that, but I have a follow up then. Was that complaint log? Was that range defined by Epsilon or by us, Situat, when we provided that complaint log?
I do not recall specifically. I believe that the range, so this log from what I recall. Provided the hub height wind speed when each of the complaints was issued. And those those speeds, I believe, ranged from five to ten meters per second, and that's how that range got defined.
Okay, thank you.
Certainly.
That's it then, I had a couple of specific and then some general ones, I, some of these I think you may have addressed. On night one, I was just, I didn't understand how you could read. Ambient but not operational. Data? Can you just explain why you could do one and not the other? It doesn't make sense to me.
Right, so one important. Item for the operational measurements and how the operational levels were defined. Was based on. Sound levels that we could attribute to the wind turbine. Based on the very detailed field notes that were taken. So the the field technician was was listening to the all of the sounds occurring and taking diligent notes. If the wind turbine was not audible. Then then we could not assign. A sound level that was attributable to the wind turbine since we could not hear it. So that that's why there were no sound levels, so no L max was defined for for that particular night. But of course, when the wind turbine was not operating, that's that's why we just took the sound levels as measured. For those ambient readings.
Okay, right, you did say that, but I needed to hear it twice because I didn't understand it.
Not a problem.
The other question for night one was. Maybe it was night four, yeah, night four was. So you had this funky delta with the. With the the two different wind speeds, hub heights. I think that's what it's called, so is that the protocol that you employ, is that? Was that, is that a normal thing that DEP blesses? Is that normal protocol to make the adjustments that you did make? Or is that just an industry standard? I just want to understand.
Well, it was initially defined by the DEP. However, the 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 goal of that was was to create this consistency between the wind turbine on measurements and wind turbine off measurements. So ideally, the. The conditions, except for the wind turbine, are identical between the two measurements so that you can do an apples to apples comparison. With the wind turbine on and wind turbine off. With the drop in in hub height wind speeds. All of a sudden, the conditions are changing, the ambient is actually changing. And dropping. More so than than what we would experience with the the stronger hub height winds. Based on that, the the higher winds in the treetops specifically. You get a lot more movement in the vegetation. So with the lower. Higher winds, the the ambient is artificially lower than when the operational readings were collected.
So so the follow up question to that is. We only did four data point, you know, four nights of data points, so. At that point, why wouldn't you? Either throw that out and do a, you know, a new night so that you don't have that variable? Because, I mean, I look at that and all of them were, you know. One point away from not being compliant, so it makes me concerned. That, you know, we didn't get the best analysis that we could have, so.
Sure, sure, but so. Given the fact that the winds reduced during the ambient readings on that particular night. That that provides us with somewhat conservative ambient reading because the the winds were were lower. And that that's really driving the. The the higher differences in that table, the nines across the board, and that's because the ambient is is. Conservative conservatively lower than what we would have actually measured under the higher winds.
Okay. I'm sorry, did you want to add more?
I was just gonna respond, I guess, more sort of the question about perhaps capturing another night. As you could imagine, there's certainly scheduling and cost impacts associated with with, you know. Getting the team back together for another night of measurements.
Okay, Andrew, you have a follow up?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm confused by that, saying that the ambient on that day four. The different, but you used the the higher ambient number, not the lower one. In table six nineteen. Or am I misreading that?
Nope, that's correct, that's correct. Right, so for the first three nights that were evaluated, we did select the lowest ambient. But for that, that last night, we picked the the ambient that was closest in time to the operational measurements. To try to match the conditions as closely as we could. To operational conditions that were captured. However, I believe that the the wind speeds at the hub had already dropped. Oddly after the the wind turbine had had powered down and and continued to drop over the night. So we essentially missed the opportunity for a direct apples to apples comparison.
Okay, so if we did do the average, then. As you did the other nights, then day four would have been totally out of compliance?
The. Mathematically, it would have showed noncompliance if we did. Use the lowest ambient from that night, I believe so.
All right, Madam Chair, back to you, that's.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Goodrich, that's a good point. I only have one other question and then we'll see if the board has any follow ups. In the in the contract, it requires that the data is sent to the DEP and I understand that happened, I don't know when it happened. I have not seen any review of their, the review of these results. Has anyone either at Town Hall or Epsilon seen? Would it typically go to Epsilon or would it go to the Town Hall is first question? And then the second question is, did we get those results?
Results of the DEP reviewing it?
Yeah, because they were they were required in the contract to be sent there, right?
It was sent to them, yeah.
It was sent to them, yeah. Whether they reviewed or not, I honestly, no, I haven't seen anything from them to say they have or they haven't.
Okay. Epsilon, do you know, do they typically, I assume they were forwarded by the town so they'd respond to the town? Okay.
That's right. Epsilon was not in direct communication with the DEP.
Okay. But the terms of the contract, so that's another thing that's sort of hanging out there, is the DEP review of these results as well. Okay. Does the board have any follow-up questions before we go to the general public questions?
Yeah, just one other. What, if you're your average person, what's the difference between this nine decibel and 11 decibel? It just seems like it's so, in some ways, subjective, that you would say, anything over 10, 11, 12 is out of compliance, but nine is not? Do you know where I'm getting at? I just, where does this 10 come from?
The 10 originates from the MASTA EP noise policy, which is actually a document dated 1990. They have stuck to their guns and that noise policy has not changed since then.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen, can I follow up with a question? So I'm trying to understand what the wind turbine is contributing to the noise. So I'm looking at the LMAX data and seeing that on the days that it's, that we read, it's somewhere between 40 and a high point of 60 is what the noise of the ambient time and the wind turbine is. And if I look at your chart here, that's somewhere between a library and a dishwasher, and on one point at location one, it gets up to that traffic at 300 feet. And then, when I look at what it would be without the turbine running, the delta is, for the most part, under 10, adding to it. So, you know, kind of on Karen's point, adding 10 to a number, like if a library is 35, then an additional 10 is miniscule. You know, it's not a huge increase on what it is if it wasn't running. Is that, is that an accurate, or is that a fair statement? I mean.
So just a general rule of thumb for sound levels, a change of 10 decibels is generally perceived to be about twice as loud. That's not particularly intuitive. A change of three decibels is generally noted to be just perceptible. So any change below three is generally imperceptible to the human ear.
Well, that's interesting. So, and that's a huge difference. So to hit 10, you're telling me it's twice as loud as it would have been without it on? But a change of three, you can't even notice it?
Short answer, yes. Of course, there's the different characteristics of sound.
So I can't look at, I can't look at a library, at being a quiet library at 35, and saying a 10 decimal, decimal increase is a third of a quiet library? So I have to kind of say it's going to go from a library to almost a dishwasher, based on your graphical chart here?
Yeah, the confusion with decibels is typically, sorry to butt in, it's because the decibel scale is logarithmic. So we get into log math, and then a lot of things go out the window very quickly because we, one plus one is no longer two, and if you add 40 and 40, you get 43, and a lot of logarithmic things that we don't like to talk about outside of math classrooms do start to happen.
Yeah, but still, just on your graphics here, it's going from 35, which is a quiet library, to 50 is a dishwasher in the other room. So, you know, it's less than that. I'm just trying to get my arms around, how much is this contributing to? Because on all the testing, you know, we had an anomaly on the first night because the wind was blowing too hard, and we couldn't get a reading at site number two. And then we had an anomaly on room, on number four, because the wind dropped considerably, and we couldn't get a good reading of the ambient. So, again, I'm trying to understand what the incremental increase of sound due to the wind turbine is. And I don't want to minimize it in my head because of my limited logarithm math knowledge, you know, but if it's, you know, on some of these days, it's three. And you're telling me you can't even hear three? You can't even tell the difference? You know, and on the worst night, it was 13. You know, and the one where we're hitting the nines really was an invalid test because the drop too much on that time period, as, you know, Andrew alluded to and somebody else brought up, so.
Right. Going back to a point that Ryan had brought up previously, it's primarily due to the ambient. As the ambient is changing, that delta is going to change, that difference is going to change. So it's not a consistent difference every single night or every single hour, for that matter.
So it's always going to be the sound of a dish, you know, I'm just looking at the data now, you know, the ambient number is always around 50.
I believe we did have some ambient levels.
Some in the 40s here.
Below.
Like right around 40 or 50. You know, day three, 57, 51, 50, you know. Okay, I don't know that I'm any further down the path, but I'm trying to figure out if that difference of, you know, less than 10 is really adding, how much is that adding to the noise? And doubling it sounds bad. But three in perceivable sounds like nothing. So if someone is complaining on a night where the delta is three, you're telling me they really can't even tell the difference? Okay, I don't have a question. Thank you.
All right, Andrew, I do want to get to the residents, too.
What's, I'm sorry, I was trying to do the math, but how many total minutes for all four nights was recorded?
It was a total of 15 minutes of operational measurements. That's three five-minute samples. And then, and that was, that was followed immediately by, after the turbine was shut down, another 15 minutes, three five-minute samples, ambient.
And is that, and again, I don't, I've never, is that normal, just to do like 15 minutes total for those, or do like?
It does depend. Again, I think that the durations were initially set by the Massachusetts Wind Turbine Noise Study Protocol from 2013. So that's consistent with previous Massachusetts wind turbine studies.
Just, I mean, again, I don't, we get eight years of complaints and then 15 minutes for a sound study while it's operational, you know, is it the right time? I mean, I don't know. I know we tried to go through the right times, but.
Oftentimes, in other post-construction programs that I've been involved in, the durations or the time clips, if you will, are based on 10-minute samples. Although we may or may not collect numerous 10-minute samples, compliance is demonstrated on 10-minute snapshots, essentially.
Thank you.
All right. Any, all right, is the board satisfied that we can open up to resident questions? Okay, oh geez, sorry, knocked my water over. Okay, so I'll review that. We are now going to open question and answering to, related to the study. If you have questions outside of the study, I will ask you to hold those until we complete the questions that we have here. We will, please address the questions to me. I will do my best to go in the order that hands are raised. And if you are non-resident, I would also ask that you please let us address resident questions first. And I see Mr. Darty's hand up, so I will, I know you are on the road, sir. I'm going to unmute you. And I just, I will add that, obviously, Mr. Darty has been very instrumental in helping us craft this study and has been involved all along. So I will be, for him, he is, I will be a little more lenient on his time, but I will ask you, Mr. Darty, I hope, hopefully, a lot of your questions were asked because you were kind enough to submit those detailed questions in advance. So, Mr. Darty, if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
David Darty, 122 Gilson Road. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Go ahead.
I want to thank you very much for allowing me this time. I am very tired, I've been driving nine hours straight in an RV on the highways, and I'm beat, I'm having trouble staying awake. You don't want me to be argumentative, you made that point rather clear, but Clint Steer has said many statements that I take is all about being wrong. So I won't, I won't question some of those. I'll try and play it like Jeopardy, asking, giving you the answers and asking for the question, I guess, then. He's made a great point about how the LEQ, pardon me, the L90 background was taken right after the three readings were taken for, to determine the LMAX, which I could get into, just argue about LEQ and LMAX, but, and then they shut the wind turbine down, they took three readings in a row to determine the ambient background or the L90. And in his evaluations, the point has been made that they took the closest L90 to the timeframe of the actual test to determine the loudest noise from the turbine, the LMAX. Well, obviously, the closest one is the first one you've taken, because that's the one closest to the ones that were, that were determined, that were used to determine the maximum value. So why bother even to look at the second two values that you, that he measured for L90, when the first one, the one that's always going to be used? My point being is, in the RFP that they answered from the town, in their current contract and the DEP, they require four separate ons and offs. So you can get the exact reading of what the background is, just when the maximum LMAX is determined, then you measure the off, then you do it again. I was, this was done at the first test that were done back in 2013, and this is how it's done most everywhere else. So I don't know why they, whether it was a favor to the wind turbine operator, so he wouldn't have to shut it down and turn it up and shut it down so many times. But that variation in the standard by which you take the loud noise from the turbine, shut it down, and determine the ambient background, and do it again, has been changed. So why didn't they do that? Because that's what they're supposed to do. And one other question, to digress. The pre-construction testing, I think it was done in 2007 by Tech Environmental, showed an ambient background at the time, 29 decibels, and that's what they designed this thing on. They assumed they couldn't go above 39. And all of a sudden, now we've had this creeping background noise, and this is part of the problem. That's one question about the misuse of L90 being taken, one run of three, five minutes for 15 minutes, rather than one after each of the measurements for the maximum.
Okay, why don't we stop you there and give them a chance to respond to the variance of doing three together and three together as opposed to back and forth? Have you, I'll just turn it over to our Epsilon, if one of you can address that.
Right. Agreed that that could be one method of measurements, but the procedure that was followed was agreed upon by the MASTA EP. Again, they did review the protocol, so the condition that we did need to meet was three operational measurements and then L90 measurements. And there, I suppose there are additional complications with turning the wind turbine on and off. There was at least one night where we requested that the wind turbine be turned off, completed our measurements, and the wind turbine could not be turned back on. So that, had we requested it to be turned back on that same night, we, the whole night would have been concluded quite early, and we wouldn't have captured the sufficient data on that evening.
Do you have another question, Mr. Darty?
Well, that wasn't the case. I see nothing in agreed upon by the DEP that they would allow to have all of the L90s be taken at one time. I've just looked through all the responses, I don't see it anywhere. And I don't, and I was a participant in that, one that nobody wanted to listen to, I might add. And there's nothing I can find here.
Well, we can, I think that that's something that we can confirm later. I know that we did, the protocol too, then, we did get the responses, so, you know.
Okay, I just want.
I guess the answer is, Dave, they didn't, they didn't point it out as a problem, so I don't.
Well, I just, well, it is. I wanted to point out that there were certain things that were done, that if it was done another way, the way that the DEP requires, and the way that they agreed upon in their contract, and the way the RFP was written, we would get different results altogether.
Okay. Well, as we said, we have not received the response from DEP about these results. So, you know, that's obviously something that I think they would flag if they had a problem with it. So I think it's unanswerable at this point, so we'll wait and see what they say.
Not to get argumentative, but you know I'm having a difficult problem right now getting answers from the DEP. I've had Zoom meetings and.
Well, that's a different measure than reviewing this study.
Yeah, but if they're not answering me, or they're not answering the town, they're not making any sort of reply to this test. I mean, how are we supposed to make any decisions? What we're going to do if the DEP were there, were there to support us, aren't doing anything?
That is, that is a point very well taken, and we will put that, I'm putting together our list of what to do tomorrow.
They're the ones that put us in this position, particularly since I was trying to get them to use LMAX instead of this LEQ, which was the way that their original generics are read, which is another question of mine, because under the procedures in the generic, it says here, "Three sampling runs would be conducted at each site, each operating in a condition to establish LMAX for each of respective operating conditions." LMAX is the highest sampled sound level. It doesn't say the highest average, this is the highest. And yet, they couldn't show me, and they couldn't come up with any document to say, well, that was changed to average. As a matter of fact, I have a document in front of me, it's a memo that was sent from Ken Kolas Kaliski of RSG and Richard Lampeter of Epsilon Associates, to one of their clients explaining why, in fact, they were turned down for a permit. And they cite the report that the DEP and the CEC co-funded in February of 2016, where they say, "There is a six to 11 decibel difference between this averaging business and the LMAX, and something has got to be done to put in a factor to correct that." Now, they pointed that out to their client in, I don't know, Wisconsin, to. Now, they pointed that out to their client in, I don't know, Wisconsin, to, to NextEra. Why didn't they point that out to Situ, that in fact, that there's an error, there's an issue within here that could, could, could show non-compliance on all four nights?
Okay.
I would think if they had.
Wait a minute, don't, he, wait, he got muted, hold on, hold on.
Sorry.
Sorry, let me, let me.
I got it, I got it.
Sorry, you got, you got muted there. Sorry, I didn't hear the last thing that you said.
If they have a professional responsibility to take care of one of their clients, why don't they do that for the town of Situ?
Okay. I interrupted just for a second there, and I just want to, I want to bring us back in for a second, and, and I understand exactly your points, I hear you, we've talked about this before. The study that is before us did go to DP, DEP, did get blessed, was performed by a qualified professional group to the, to those specifications. The piece we don't have, as you're absolutely right, is we have not gotten the feedback from DEP. But the problems that you are, you're noting are as well taken as they are, are beyond the scope of reviewing this study, and also are beyond the scope of what we can accomplish tonight. We're not going to be able to change DEP policy tonight, we need to work with the tools we have before us. So, I hear you, Dave, I understand, I sat beside you at the State House to talk about fixing some of this stuff that you know far better than I do. But let's, let's, I'd like to get through the questions about this particular study, not the parameters under which they have to operate, because we can't affect those right now. Did you have another follow-up, or I do know that others haven't, haven't spoken? Hold on, hold on. We'll let you.
The only other thing is, the only other thing is, you know, I, I don't want to rebut Clint, but he answered one of the questions that was sent in about why, in fact, they included that narrative about the owners of the home closest to the wind turbine, which are the ones that have most greatly impacted. And his answer was that, he stated as a fact that these people took money to ignore or overlook conditions of loud noise. That's not what really happened. And I sent that document to all of you people in the board, so you know what Mr. Seer said was not true, yet he spoke with such an affirmative nature, you begin to question some of the other statements he's made, just how they might not be as accurate.
Okay, well, Mr. Darty, I think we all did actually cover that, and in Epsilon's defense, I will say, they were, they were given information, and they just made the statement that in some towns they do that.
And where did that information come from? Where did that information come from?
It's public records, sir, so, but.
Public record is the facts.
That is the fact, but here's the thing, that's not relevant to the conversation we're having right now. The conversation we're right now, the board has already asked if there's one point that doesn't comply, and it happens to be that particular location that you're referring to, what does that mean, and can we force compliance? So, as, unless the board feels differently, I thought it was clearly, clearly stated, in our minds, we're looking at the study, and we're looking at the compliance, and it's our job to figure out, does that mean we can go to the turbine and say, hey, this doesn't work, regardless of that side, side thing, side agreement? So, if we could stay to the study, I don't see any other hands, I, I'd be surprised. Oh, Phyllis is waving, she doesn't know which button to push, so that works, Phyllis, I'll unmute you. Please state your name and address.
Okay, Phyllis Carlberg, 26 Hughes Road, and I am the number two that you're talking about for the testing sites. Karen, if I can say that I did volunteer my home, because I do listen to this over and over and over again, and I figured that I was a good center to, to use, because I do hear it way too often. One of the questions that I do have for you, Mr. Seer, because I was out there all four nights with your, your test peoples, and the first night that they came, it was extremely windy. I mean, you really, you couldn't hear anything but the, the trees blowing around, it was blowing really good, and you don't hear the turbine when it's blowing like that, you know? But he did the testing down low to the ground, and I said, "My problem is, my bedroom window is over that way, and it's up high. Why would they not test in that area where, where I'm hearing the, the biggest part of the problem?"
That's a really good question, I'll direct that to Clint, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take a first, first swing at that. The, the measurement locations were, were refined, as mentioned in the, the presentation from the kickoff meeting, we went around and we, we figured out locations. As far as the physical location of the microphone, it's typical industry standard to stay clear of larger reflective surfaces, so therefore, we, we do not typically measure very close to a house or other large reflective surfaces such as that. And the height of the microphone was actually set by the, the MASTA EP Wind, Wind Turbine Study Protocol, so that, that's why it was measured at that height above the ground, and then the, the location, of course, was, was refined to, to minimize reflections, as, as mentioned.
Right, well, that's part of my problem, is that it's an L-shaped, and it's, I'm in the back of that L, and it just bellows in through there, which I think probably takes that and, and takes it up that 20 to 30 notches that you're talking about, because it's brutal. And then the, the other thing that, and one, the last night that they were there, oh no, I think it was the third night that they were there, I said to them, "Why, geez, you should have been here at eight o'clock, that's, like, those are the conditions that we wanted to have tested," you know? Any kind of, you know, well, I, which I understand, but another question that I have for you would be, how do we get the measurement of the wind speed at the top of the turbine where, where, to get the accurate wind speeds that we're looking to have, you know, documented?
Should, is that an Epsilon question, Jim, or? Oh, wait, Phyllis, Phyllis, you're moving your lips, but hold on. I started talking and you went into oblivion there. Who's the right person to answer that question?
We can get those, we can just ask Situ where they're from.
It's all in the SCADA data, that's all they have. They don't, that's all they measure, all their measurements are from the top of the turbine.
Right, I know. Okay, so we as citizens can look that up and find out where that's coming from, or what those are? All right, I mean, that might help clarify for us, you know, in helping you make your decisions or something like that, you know, so that we're all talking the same numbers and where they're coming from. But it is.
Do you have another question, Phyllis? Because I, I did, I did want to direct something to Mr. Vignette, one, one area we didn't discuss, that Tony's visit to ask some of those questions. Do you want to? Phyllis, let me finish, and then I'll ask Tony to comment.
No, that's, that's fine, I'm, I, I think I've made, you know, we do listen to it, whether the numbers that you show or not, or, you know, or, it's a problem, it's a major problem for the neighborhood, but thank, thank you.
All right, thanks, Phyllis.
If Phyllis had a particular timeframe she was looking for, I mean, each week is about 10 pages of, of stuff, in terms of the wind direction and stuff, so if there's a particular period of time, it'd just be less paper, if she could let us know what she was looking for, we can get that.
Okay. Do we want to pause, and there was some question about our inquiry on behalf, you know, in preparation for this meeting, about the data and, and the complaints? Tony, did you want to just comment on that? Because we haven't had a chance to hear your.
I mean, I would finish with, with the Epsilon report thing, and then we can talk about, you know, that would, that would deal more with mitigation and.
Okay, that's fine, that makes sense. All right, I see Ellen has her hand up, I'm going to unmute you, or whatever box you're in, if you could give your name and address, please. Oh, you're right there.
I'm giving my name and address again?
Just for the record, because.
Okay, Ellen Casper, 120 Gilson Road.
Thank you.
So, um, there were plenty of nights before April where there could have been testing done. I have at least four, five, six nights that I've been, as you know, taking screenshots, and sometimes I'm just, I'm too tired to do that, but we use the data that we have available to us, and we've been sending you information for a long time, and they should be able to, even though we're getting the information from somewhere else than they are, they should be able to check and make sure that they're testing on nights. The April 19th testing night, I emailed everyone the next day and asked if testing had been done, because it was absolutely not the conditions that would bother us. We don't mind the sound of the wind, we don't mind the sound of the leaves, we don't mind that, it's lovely. The sound of that wind turbine on a quiet night is brutal, it is brutal, it wakes you up all night long. And you have to remember, it's not just, it's not just noise, this nuisance is noise, it's vibration, it's shadow flicker, it's infrasound, it's, it's other things besides this. And these, these things mean nothing, honestly, in the, in the, the whole scheme of things, this wasted money means nothing, because it still bothers us. It doesn't accurately reflect what we live with in our homes, and just like Phyllis said, you know, get, bring it into the bedroom, no one in eight and a half years has come, we've invited them, I'll call you up at night, come sleep in the bed with us, and see what we have to deal with. It's just, it's really, really difficult, and it's very discouraging and frustrating to have to go all these years and have this testing done for naught, really for naught, because it doesn't accurately reflect what we deal with.
Okay, I, I, I hear you, I did not hear a question there, but I think when we're done with questions.
So, I was wondering why the April 19th testing was done, it did not reflect the conditions at all that we deal with. It was so windy on the ground, and we, it's not windy when it bothers us, it's very still, there's no wind, and all you can hear is that loud whooshing noise.
Okay.
So, why was it done that night?
So, I'll, let me direct that question to Clint. So I know that they've talked a little bit about how the protocol was put together, and it was based on SCADA data, you know, were correlated to complaints, so could you maybe, Clint, or Ryan, address how that perceived disconnect works when you, when you're doing this kind of protocol?
Right, so generally speaking, for a post-construction program, you want to measure sound levels produced by the, the project, by the sound source, under worst-case conditions, so under the conditions that, that the source is producing as much sound as it, as it can. So that, that mentality is why one of the hub high conditions was defined, that maximum sound output condition, and that was the target for that particular night in April, and I, I do believe that the, the wind speeds were, were perhaps even a little bit stronger than, than we had forecasted at that night. However, we did measure ground-level wind speeds within the appropriate thresholds that we were looking for, based on ANSI standards. So, so that was meeting one of our conditions, however, based on the, the protocol, there, we were saving two nights to, designed around those, those complaint wind speed conditions, which, which I think are more what, what was being discussed, that, that lower wind speed, five to 10 meters per second range, I, I think that's, that's where you're seeing the, the complaints and, and the larger contrast, the much more audible sound from the wind turbine.
Um, are there, I do not see any other hands, let me go, oh, wait, we got one waving. Ken, I'm going to unmute you.
Hi, my, my name is Ken Anger, I live at 60 New Driftway. I can see the turbine from my home, I'm about 3,800 feet from it, I do not hear anything, so I'm distant from that. I have a number of comments, but as you asked for, only questions relating to the protocol, I, I'm, I'm a little baffled about the inconclusive report from the 26 Hughes location, it seems to me that calling it inconclusive was not accurate, because it was, it, it reflected no, no difference between background and wind turbine, so saying it's inconclusive struck me as not, not accurate, that, that in fact was a very, a very good for the town, good for the neighbors, good for everything result, as contrasted with the others, where you can have some disagreement.
Thank you, Ken. Did you want to comment on that, either of our experts?
I, I suppose I can, I, I think that's, that's a reasonable interpretation, and that, that's, that's, that's reasonable, because it, it shows that the wind turbine is inaudible at times, whereas there would essentially be no difference between the operational sound levels experienced and the ambient when the wind turbine was shut down. However, since we were trying to define a LMAX sound level that was attributable, attributable to the wind turbine specifically, without being able to hear it, it was difficult to actually assign a level there. However, perhaps a, a different conclusion could actually be made, as opposed to just stating inconclusive.
Okay. All right, um, I don't, I don't see any other questions, anyone else, residents with questions? I have received a request for a short break before we continue with this conversation, because it's been two and a half hours, and normally, if we were in the building, we would get a chance to run down the hallway, so if, if you guys wouldn't mind holding on, it's 9:01 now, and if we could convene at 9:05 again, Seth, I don't know what that means to your broadcast, but I'm sorry about that. I will.
Just keep going, you're good.
We'll just keep going, okay, so if somebody wants to sing and dance while we take a short break, we will recommence in about three and a half minutes.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we commencing with the wind turbine issue, or are we letting Epsilon, is Epsilon done for the evening?
Oh, that's a good question. Um, I, that's a very good question, thank you very much, Madam, Ms. Curran. I would, I'm, I'm reluctant to let them go only because of their expertise, but you're absolutely right, we are going to review what we've heard amongst ourselves and then see if there's additional, so unless there's a, somebody has an objection, I think that's a wonderful suggestion that these gentlemen can get on with our evening. Does anyone have an objection to, to that? Not the, Epsilon does not have an objection to that. All right, well, thank you, then we will say thank you very much for your input and your expertise, we very much appreciate it, well, we all have some follow-up things, and we definitely need to wait and, and see what the DEP review results are, and we will, we'll certainly need some follow-up on that, I would think. So, all right, so now we're going to adjust our clocks to 9:06, we'll reconvene.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Break. We've just concluded the presentation from Epsilon about the most recent wind turbine study, and have had questions and answers from the board and the public. I will note three things that we definitely want to follow up with, and that is, at, you know, what's the threshold where we notify the operator that there is a non-compliance, as there was one data point in this study that was, so we need to definitively find that out. Somebody mentioned that slower blades can make it quieter, that was news to me, I would like to follow up on that. And then the other thing I noted was that we needed to get DEP to. And then the other thing I noted was that we needed to get DEP to as quickly as possible, give us their notes about this study so that we could determine if it was fully, if we were satisfied with it, if there needed to be tweaked or not. Did the board have other follow-up items that we can put on the list that I missed? Oops.
The testing, off-on testing?
Oh, yeah. Mr. Dartes. Okay. Yeah. I think that is a DEP follow-up. Okay. Anything else that those, anyone thinks that needs to be followed up on that? Okay. As I said at the onset of this conversation, that obviously this is a lot of information and obviously we have at least a few pretty key things that we still need input on. And so we're not going to take any votes on this matter. We're not accepting this until we have our questions answered. So that's the study. And I would like to open it up to the board to talk about any other sort of ancillary issues because this is obviously, obviously kicks off some conversations. And I didn't know if we wanted to start with Mr. Vignani updating us on his visit to the site or to the operator because that's information that we have not heard.
Sure. Um, so about, I, I think it was in the end of August, I, I asked to have a meeting with Situate Wind just to kind of get an update. We're still getting some complaints and I was wondering why our mitigation agreement wasn't, wasn't really having the impact that I thought it would. And also wanted to just talk to them about, about, just making them aware that there's still complaints and is there anything that they can do? Can they, is there more maintenance that can be done? Is there new technology? Is there anything that, that we're missing over the last 10 years that could have changed on, that we change on the, on the turbine itself to make it not create the noise that's upsetting some of the residents? So I had that conversation with them and there is not, there is no new technology. There is no special lubricant that they can put on it. There is no anything that they can just change to, to make it a quieter process. I was surprised, as you noted earlier, Madam Chair, about the, the slowing of the blades. That really interested me as well. So I'd like to bring that back to them and hear what their input is on that. But what I did do is I talked to them about and wanted to make sure that the mitigation that we put in place is actually happening. And it is. And I wanted to talk to them about what the impact had been over the last several years of us putting this in place. And I can quickly go over what the, what the terms are that we put together way back when. You know, again, based on complaint data that we had and, and the conditions that we thought were impacting them. So just really quickly, there's four conditions. We, we shut it off between June 1st and October 15th. A few years, including this year, we actually started it earlier than June 1st. It's between 11:00 AM, it's, excuse me, 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And the wind direction is from the southwest and it's 22 and a half degrees on either side of southwest. And that wind speed is lower than 4.5 meters or 10 miles per hour is when it gets shut off, which, which are kind of the conditions that people have been talking about, you know? A couple of the people that were speaking earlier, I think Phyllis and Ellen were saying, you know, when it's quiet is when it impacts them. And so I had, I had them send me a lot of the data and we went over the data points. And the fact of the matter is the wind is not blowing in the conditions that we are shutting it off. It is shutting off, but it does not shut off that frequently because that just doesn't happen that often. I think over the last couple of years, it's only cost us a few thousand dollars in lost income because those conditions just aren't being hit. So that prompted me to send an email out to the, you know, the, there's probably about a half a dozen or six or seven people that send us emails frequently. And I asked them to send me dates when it's impacting them now so that I could find out what conditions they're having that are, that are impacting them and then getting the SCADA data from them on those dates to find out what, what's really happening and what, what conditions are impacting them. So in looking at that, they sent me about five or six dates in the month of September and August that impacted them or maybe a few more than that. So I got the data on those dates and looked at what the conditions were when they were actually being impacted. And I, I see that the wind on those dates is coming from a more westerly wind. So where we're saying, and I don't bore you with these charts, but you know, we're saying the conditions are from, you know, about 202 to 247 is the, by the compass. And they're having impacts all the way up to the 300s. You know, so it's, you know, I don't know if this chart is kind of, but we're, we're shutting it off in this condition, but this condition is impacting them as well. And the wind speeds that are impacting them as well are above that 10 miles per hour. Now remember always, the wind is always measured from the top of the turbine. So, so what we're saying at four and a half, it's going to go down. They're actually complaining in, at winds that get up to almost seven meters per second at a high end on the dates that I looked at. So I think what we should do, well, you know, what I can do and kind of put this together a little bit, a little bit better is look at what mitigation, what changes we can make to the current mitigation agreement, find out what the monetary impact of that would be and maybe adjust the parameters that we're hitting now to see if it shuts it off during those, those periods is what we're trying to accomplish, you know, several years ago when we started this. So I don't know if, if that helps. I don't, I don't really have enough right in front of me right now to say we need to shut it off if it's coming from, you know, 20 degrees from southwest yet. But I think we can come up with that and we can probably come up with different parameters to adjust for next year that I think will shut it off under conditions that they are complaining about now, which, you know, which I think will have a positive impact and which we was trying to accomplish all along.
Okay. That's, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if, if anyone has any questions on it or more than that. I can certainly share the data and, and you guys can look at it yourself and see, see if you come to the same conclusions. But that, that's basically what I'm, what I'm seeing is that the wind is coming outside of the parameters that we've set. So if we broaden, if we broaden that, that path from here to here and increase the wind capacity that's higher anyways, because it's coming from the top of the turbine, I think it will, it will automatically shut down during those periods of, of complaints. And what we need to do is just find out what the financial impact of that is going to be, which they started to run some numbers for me, but I'm not confident saying what those numbers are right now.
Thank you, Tony, for, for doing all of that research. I just want to take a step back and say, it's like, I think, you know, we, we definitely think here that, you know, as Alan just said, that whatever, you know, whatever the studies say, whatever the, you know, whether we're in compliance or not, we, we have residents that are being impacted. So taking a look at a way that can improve, you know, decrease the time that that, it bothers them is certainly a good step. Does anyone want to comment on, on sort of that piece of it? That's within our control. Yes, Mr.? Are you muted? You're muted.
I was muted. So going through this very well, this very well put together document, I just got upset and I'm just angry looking at the history of all this in the sense that, and I just want to express that. I mean, DEP with these standards have, has us looking at, is this ambient plus three decibels? Is it this time or not? Or the, the fact that this is based on certain sound levels makes this so difficult. And the most important thing that I heard tonight was from that Epsilon professional who said that the DEP standards are an, are a moving target. So no wonder we're never going to get our heads around this. But not, but when I think about this, we also have eight years of data points. Those are from the residents. Though, to me, that's impactful. If there's anything that this pandemic has taught me is that we have to put people's health over money or profits and do everything we can to help these folks. And then the more I look, the, the fact that this is so close and we're an anomaly that the 650 feet away. If the River Club had eight years of complaints and people saying they can't sleep would say, okay, concerts stop at 11:00. Foxborough Stadium, concerts stop at 10 o'clock, certain feet away. And I, I know we're not supposed to be changing those standards, but, and what makes me upset is I want clean energy. I want the turbine. We can't have nice things. Like, the whole thing is so upsetting. And, you know, my question is, if, again, if this were the River Club, can we shut it off at night? The, the person from Epsilon said, maybe we have to do, you talked about the sound, you know, sound mitigation, financial incentives. Other communities have had to do that. I don't know. I just, we, there really are, for us trying to figure out, is it southwest wind or east wind or whatever? At some point, it's got to be a time, in my opinion, a time-based, easy to understand, it's off at this time, comes on at that time. But I, I don't know if the contractor ever let us to do that because that's what we would do for any other business.
Well, that, that's a question that I definitely wanted to bring up is, you know, at some point, we have a, we have a contract in place and if we can't, if we can't address it because it's not in compliance because of the moving target of DEP, other towns have mitigated, other towns have set different times. At what point do we get, if we say, fine, let's turn it off all summer long at night? At what point do we start incurring, forget the financial impact? Do we, are we in breach of contract? You know, how far can we go? And I don't know if we know the answer to that question. Do we know the answer to that question?
I, I believe the answer is, it doesn't matter. We have to pay them. So if you want to shut it off, you can shut it off, but it's going to cost you whatever, whatever the money it would have made for being on, we have to pay them.
Okay. But I do know that that isn't, that wasn't, that's not what's happening in Plymouth. Tim, do you have some insight at all or?
So Plymouth, there are complaints about the turbine in Plymouth mostly coming from Wareham, from what I understand. Then Water Health sent a letter to the turbine company that they thought it was a nuisance and then nothing ever happened. I don't believe they had the data or the necessary information to declare it a nuisance, but nothing happened with that as far as I know. It's still, it's still operating. As, as Tony said, we can set different parameters. We can meet with Situate Wind to talk about shutting the turbine down for different periods at different times. We will have to pay for that, but there could be a time where Situate Wind says, okay, you are now really interfering with our ability to operate this turbine. You're in breach. We have the right to quiet use and operation of our facility. I think is the language of the lease. But you could come to a, a situation where they say, no, we're, we can't do it. You're in breach and we're not going to do it. But what that would be, you just have to sit down and talk to them, say, what about this? What about this? And then they have to get back to you. You know, as Tony was talking about, an opening of that, that window, I think they would be amenable to. How far we open that window, we'll talk about how, how much it's going to cost. I think if you started saying it's going to be shut down at night, period. You know, again, I'm not a lawyer, but I think now you're getting into an area where they're going to say, look, it's just, you're interfering with our ability to operate the turbine. That could be a problem. Might not be, but I do think if you went that far, that could be a problem. Tony, I don't know if you agree, disagree, but.
Yeah. I, I, I mean, yeah, I, I think that's right. And I, I think, I think they're willing to work with us, but I think there will be at some point in time where, you know, they're, they're not running a wind turbine anymore. They would just be flipping a switch off and on. So, and it is concerning. And I, unfortunately, we've been talking about this for years. I've sat up on Gilson Road for hours and hours listening to this thing out in front of these, out in front of the houses and the people that are complaining. I've spoken to all their neighbors, right? And I don't doubt that, that there's people that are hearing things, but it's not cut and dry. And it's a, it's a very, you know, kind of, it's a difficult situation. There's not a clear answer to it. And we've signed a very expensive contract and it went through all the processes to get approved. And, you know, and it, it's not an easy answer, unfortunately. So I, I don't know what the next step is other than trying to mitigate it, to shut it off during the time periods where it's upsetting people and try and minimize the cost to the town. Seems to be, you know, a, a logical next step to me anyways.
Ms. Curran, did you have your?
Yeah, I did. Thank you. So a couple of things, I, I mean, I completely agree that we need to look at the mitigation. And Tony, thanks for doing that. I want to grab additional information too because I got to tell you, so many times I walk by that turbine and it's not even turning when you think it's supposed to be turning. So I'd love to know, you know, over the course of the year, when we do grab data from Situate Wind, how many days of the year is it really operational? Because I don't have a good sense of that and maybe it's just coincidence when I, when I'm down there and the wind's blowing and it's not. So I kind of want to take a look at that as well when we, when we do our research. And I also think that we need to go on a, a, the same path of if we're going to turn it off this type of green energy because it's impacting the health of some of our residents, what alternate green energy can we supplement? You know, are there more places where we can put solar that is quiet and less intrusive to make up for maybe that financial commitment that we would have to pay Situate Wind as a result? So I think we also have to look at that at the same time as we go down this path. And with regards to the mitigation at night, we seem to only get the complaints in the summertime. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the residents certainly can, can correct me if I'm wrong. But I, I also think we need to get like a meteorological, meteorologist, I can't even say it, meteorologists to tell us what our wind direction is over the year. Because, I mean, in the summertime, the wind does predominantly come from south-southwest. But in the wintertime, it may come from another direction. So I don't want ourselves to get into a situation where we turn it off from all, from all westerly points, right? And then eight months later, it's like, well, no, we're being bothered from the northeast now. So I think we really need to understand fully, you know, if this is an annual, an annual disturbance, if you will, for the residents and it isn't just between April and October. I would like to understand also what the wind directions are annually as we go through this so we make the right judgment as to what to do, how to turn it off. I, I mean, I, I agree with Andrew. I, I would love to turn this thing off, but I think we need to be responsible in find alternate ways in which to supplement the financial loss that we may incur.
I see Ellen's had her hand up for a while. It's, and Mark. So we'll go to Ellen and then Mark unless the board will be a little informal tonight. Ellen, Lorraine, let's not make her surname and address again.
Okay. Ellen Casper, 120 Gilson Road. But someone else is going to ask the question.
So I can tell you what my address is.
Oh, wait, you're going to sneak, you snuck in.
I did. So my name's Stephen Weller. I live at 120 Gilson Road. And actually, this question might have been more appropriate a little bit earlier, but I was just curious for Epsilon, have they traditionally done these tests for commercial or towns versus residents? So I'd just be curious what their background is on that sort of thing.
Yeah. I thought, I don't have his presentation right in front of me. I thought they walked, he walked through their, oh, he walked through his personal credentials, didn't he?
He did.
Um, I can tell you it a dodelly. Does anyone know specifically? I mean, they've been around a long time.
I think it's at the front of the description. I did see it in our book somewhere.
Yeah, I thought so too.
Of who they. Of who they are. You know, I think they do predominantly work for private immunists, you know, government contracts, to your point.
Yes, see, I shouldn't have let him go home. Yeah, you know what? If you don't mind, we can... I mean, I know we can...
It's okay to let us know at another time, but it's just something that might be important to know.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I will say that, you know, when they were... When we were bidding this contract and writing it out, obviously, the process is to only use qualified people. So, but we can get you the specifics on that. I just... It's in this big book somewhere.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Mr. McKeever. All right. Mark, name and address, since it's your first time addressing us.
Yes, Mark McKeever, 151 Drifway. I have two kind of comments. The first one is, coming up probably in the next month, when we turn the clocks back, I'm going to have kind of a very difficult situation here, in the sense of, with the COVID and the kids doing two days from, you know, two days home, two days at the high school. And I also have a college student going to UMass Amherst that is at home as well. When this flicker comes, my daughter's an A student, my son's an B-plus, A-minus student. How are they going to study in my house when my whole house is going to be filled with flicker from approximately 20 after 1:00 in the afternoon until 4:30, when the sun goes down? And secondly, I know some of you new, you know, the new board, which is nice to see some new faces. If you truly want to feel the impact, I'm sitting in my office, and I can hear and feel this turbine as I'm talking to you. I can feel it, and I can hear it. And although it's not blowing very hard, it's... I got woken up this morning at 2:30, and I haven't been back to sleep. I've been up since 2:30 in the morning. And it's just... What I'm ultimately trying to say is, if you folks really want to truly feel the impact that this thing has, come to my house, have a cup of coffee on my porch, have a cup of coffee or water on my back deck, or come into my living room and sit down and have a conversation with me, because whether it's blowing out of the east, out of the southwest, west-southwest, the ambient being 10 mile, it's awful here. And I was a little bit horrified with the mitigation that was falsely accused of me getting money for specific things. If you'd like to come over to my house, I'd be more than happy to discuss what that mitigation was, because somebody, and I kind of have an idea who it was, is trying to portray me as being not a very nice man. And that's just not the case. So if you truly want to know the answer, and I know David has sent some information, and, you know, a few things have taken place and have been put in your hands. If you guys want the truth, come bang on my door, and I'd be more than happy to sit down and have a cup of coffee and tell you the truth.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And we really feel for everybody, especially in this time when everyone's home.
I'm not very happy about the, you know, the, like I said, the strolling effect. It's coming, and it's, you know...
Does it happen? I mean, you say it's coming, so it's not year-round. It's when...
No, no. It's when they turn the clocks back and the angle of the sun comes at a different angle, and when it gets behind it, it's just... It's really, really, really bad here. Like, there isn't any room in my house that isn't affected. And so, like I said, with my daughter in high school and my son in college, that trying to do their best, and, you know, I just don't know what to do or what to tell them.
So I think one of us should come sit on your deck and talk about that specific issue, about how long it is, the month, you know, the timeframe. You obviously know when.
Yeah.
I think...
Five years ago, you couldn't, because I was such an angry, bitter guy. But now, I mean, you folks are at least attempting to do right by us. I know it's a difficult... You guys are put in a very difficult situation, but come spend five minutes during the flicker, and you will leave with a headache. You will leave with tightness in your chest. You'll leave... I mean, it's not good. It really is not good. And I know I've been barking about it for a long time. But again, for some of the new blood that's been in, I'd be more than willing and more than happy to sit down and have a conversation with whoever wants to do... You know, whoever wants to come, now that football's not being played. I've got plenty of time on my...
Well, you know, I'm going to put that on our follow-up list, and see where... You know, we're not going to be able to solve that tonight. But it's now on the follow-up list, so I wrote it down. And you said, I think you said you had another question or comment?
Well, just about the mitigation that, you know, that was... I was falsely accused of something that wasn't the truth. And, you know, I can handle taking punches, but punches that, you know, deemed me out to be something that I'm not is just, it's not right. And the two people that provided that information owe me and owe my wife an apology, as far as I'm concerned. And they know who they are. And eventually, down the road, we'll, whether I bump heads with them in the coffee shop or somewhere down the road, they owe me an apology, because it's, you know, I can handle the truth, but, you know, when you're telling stories, you know, 10-year-old children tell stories, not grown people, you know, grown men shouldn't.
Well, I hope that if nothing else, tonight, you realize that this particular board... And I know that prior boards as well have felt that, you know, we are, as you say, this is a tough conundrum. Nobody gets the issue.
This board has done the most in prior times. But, you know, again, it's, you're put in a very difficult situation. I understand that. Previous selectmen that have left the board or retired or whatnot, you know, whether or not the information was correct or accurate or whatnot, it's a very difficult position. It's, you know, you need to generate money, but you also need to protect the residents of this town that pay their taxes and, you know, want to live in a wonderful community.
Thanks. Well, that's why I put poor Lorraine through the paces to get all these documents, because I wanted to... I personally wanted to see all of the source documents myself and not have it interpreted. So, all right, you're on our follow-up list. Ms... What's your name? Connolly, K2. Oh, wait, you're unmuted, Karen. Karen, you're still muted yourself.
I'm still not good at this.
There you are.
All right. I'd like to know if we could have legal counsel review the contract with Situate Wind to see if we have any sort of wiggle room. I know that the original agreement was a 15-year agreement, and I thought maybe, you know, we would be able to do something at the end of 15 years. But it looks like there are two five-year extensions. I don't know if there's any way for us to, you know, get out of this contract earlier, earlier than... To fulfill it through the 15. And are we obligated to extend it for five years and then another five years? Because I think if we didn't have to extend it, you know, we might not want to. So I'd just like to know what... Could legal counsel at least look and give us some advices to... You know, is there any possibility of us being able to decide not to renew in five years?
Yeah, I won't put Jim on the spot, but definitely put...
No. I think we need a lawyer to look back through that contract again, you know.
He has it already.
And I do think this is a... What?
He has the contract already, so...
Who has the contract? Have they reviewed it lately, just to say to us, you know, given everything that's going on?
Not for that, no.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to know if there is, because then, you know, maybe the financial implications, if we didn't have to renew it, would be significantly different. And I still think this issue lends itself potentially to a political solution in terms of, you know, perhaps an override gets proposed to the town. We haven't had an operational override in town for, I think it's 10 years, maybe. And, you know, maybe now it's time to look at some potential operational override. I know it's a bad time in terms of everyone's finances and COVID and all that stuff, but the way things work, it seems to take a couple of years to get something moving, vis-à-vis town meeting, vis-à-vis, you know, override votes, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But I think we need to consider what our options are.
Well, I think that is definitely goes in the category, as Ms. Curran said, is just, you know, if we are... We have a lot of questions. So if we, as a board, say, you know what, you know, let's just not do this anymore, which obviously is very difficult. We need to look at the legal ramifications of that and the financial ramifications of that, so that, you know, maybe we have to replace that. So those are definitely questions we need to really nail down. Mr. Hunt, hands up. Hello, Mr. Hunt. Are we... Does the board have another comment? Or would you allow me to invite Mr. Hunt? Oh, are you unmuted? I don't even see a mute thing on you. Do you have your audio? Oh, here we are. I've invited you to unmute. I don't...
He's on two times, so you might need to unmute both. He needs to be dialed in and videoed in on two different devices.
You're unmuted on one, and you're pictured on another. Would you please give your name and address, sir?
Oh, James Hunt, 60 Stanlot Road. My question is very simple. What is the current cost to cancel the contract?
So it's not a simple answer, Jim. And I'll let Jim Bedrow answer that, because he's good at that.
Yeah, it's not a simple answer. I'll have to go back, look at how long's the contract. It's the value of what Situate Wind is doing. We would have to pay them for that. Plus, the town would have to make up the difference for whether we're buying energy from Situate Wind for and what we would pay for that energy buying it someplace else. So it's going to take me a little while to calculate that. I haven't done it yet, Jim. I'm sure we can, but at this point, it's a big number.
And adding into that, almost certainly, a very high legal bill.
I would submit that it's worth investigating to determine the actual cost.
I... It's on... We'll put it on the list, then.
Put it on the list. Thank you very much.
Blacklist. Right, I'm writing it down. Okay. All right, we've been on this topic for a while. Mr. Goodrich, your hand is up.
Yeah, so I mean, I guess just part of that, if part of that discussion, you know, if it's deemed that, or if there's some other bylaw of a noise nuisance like we do with the River Club or other places, you're in violation of that, does the contract supersede those other bylaws that we have because of that? Or is that, could that be a way for us to go back with them to see if they cancel their contract? Again, it seems like they're the only company that's allowed to make noise at 2:00 a.m.
Well, we'll go back and look at that. I think that I probably... Jim, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the short answer on that is, they got a special permit.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Yeah, and so we'll have to go back and see the, you know, the termination on that, but...
I mean, in simplistic terms, Andrew, if we ask them to shut the turbine down for periods of time because we would like it to be shut down to accommodate residents or for whatever reason, we pay for that. If they're in violation of 310 CMR, 710, which is the noise regulation, and they have to shut down to correct that, then we are not on the hook for any of that payment, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess I was saying, if we tightened some of our regulations, if we tightened and changed, but, you know, so...
You can't go back either. I don't think you can. Now, I've thought about that for other issues.
You knew that as soon as you were asking it. Yeah, we can't go back and change the regulations and apply them online.
Yeah, nice thought, though. All right, Mr. Vignani?
Just one quick comment. Before we decide to tear the thing down, let's try and deal with the opportunity to make, get a win-win here, right? I mean, we can tell them to shut it off when there's flicker going on. We can tell them to shut it off when the wind's blowing in the direction that bothers these people during that time of year. We just didn't get the target right the first time. So I think we've got to go at this at a different angle before we try and say, "Let's shut it off. Let's cancel the contract. Let's have an override to buy it out." You know, I think we've got to look at other solutions first, before we get to that drastic level.
Okay. Well, I don't think we can... I think we can do both at the same... I think we can do the investigation on both.
Oh, you can investigate both, but I would suggest you take the first track before you go to the next one.
Okay. Karen, and then we'll go to Mr. Darty, I think.
Yeah, I just want to say, I think we don't have to do one thing at a time. I think we can be looking at different alternatives. And, you know, because I just think it's a waste of time to not consider looking at the contract to see what options we might or might not have. I don't think that's something that we have to, you know, wait to, you know... And if we find out that there's such a substantial amount of money involved, then, you know, we have to think of how we would make it up, to Mara's point, and how we'd be able to make it up in green energy, not just in, you know, fire up the coal plant. But so I just think, I hear what you're saying, Tony, but I really think we have to be on a couple of tracks at the same time.
And I agree with you, but we've done this. We did it five years ago. We did it six years ago. So, I mean, we can go through it again, and we'll find out that it's a million and a half dollars a year to shut it off. And that's fine. I have no problem doing that.
Yeah, so there's one analysis did put the cost of shutting it down completely, without the complications, just on the lost revenue was over 700 a year.
700,000.
700,000. That's two zeros. Yep, three zeros. So, Mr. Darty, sorry.
But that's to shut it down entirely, yes?
Yeah, but that's, as Jim pointed out, that's the simplistic. That's just the math, but there's obviously much of it. It gets complicated.
Well, which is why we need a couple of analyses here, to know what we're really talking about in terms of money. That's all. That's all I say.
I'm going to let Mr. Darty... Oh, sorry. Are you done? I'm sorry, I stepped on you there. All right, I'm going to let Mr. Darty have the last word on this. We're going to recap, and then go through our to-do list, and then go on to the last few things on our agenda at 9:40. This is our longest meeting. All right, Mr. Darty?
I'm obviously not going to be helpful to your position. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, yep.
Mr. Vignani suggested that you got to find the right wind direction to shut this thing down. Well, the McKeever's who you heard from have become so despondent and withdrawn from this whole ordeal over the past eight years because of the way they were treated from the back in the vetting process, that they haven't complained when it always, when it bothers them. And the wind direction means nothing to them. When you're that close to that turbine, it's annoying. It's hurting. When you're that close to that turbine, it's annoying, it's hurting, it, you know, it doesn't matter what direction the wind, it's either from worst to the worst, you know, and they have a bigger problem too with the shadow flicker. But the noise is with them all the time. Now that they've become revitalized, realizing that there are five individuals on the board who are sensitive, I hope he will begin to send in complaints so you know just how significant an issue it is with him and his family. I mean, they've gone through a lot of medical issues, I mean, that started back in 2012 when they presented, your attorney presented a letter from the pediatrician of the treatment that their children were getting due to the stress from this thing, and it was ignored. And if you look at the planning board minutes in 2009 during the vetting process, he was quite outspoken, he brought in materials about what was wrong and how close it was, and people were really rude to him, if you read the minutes. And he just walked off in disgust. I wasn't around at the time, I was in Florida taking care of my mother, but, nah, so, any direction is going to impact them.
Okay, well, you know, Dave, we.
And one other thing now, one other thing.
Sure, go ahead.
I know that the testing results are not in favor of residents' complaints, but if you deem this thing as compliant with state code, it's still not going to stop your complaints, you're going to continue to get them from us and other people. And there are so many people who are not complaining because they're just tired, that nobody's listening. So the issue's not going away and something affirmative has to be done.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. I think that we, we are hearing you and we're going to see what we can do. So I'm going to just recap that we, our follow-up items are, to see if we, you know, the parameters under which we can, why am I, are you guys hearing an echo? Oh, all right, sorry, I don't know why. Okay, we're going to, okay, notify the wind turbine, see, figure out if the one point is enough to make us notify them of non-compliance, look into slower blades, talk to DEP and get their input, discuss the on-off testing with NEDEP, we're going to do an analysis of the shut-off data, the mitigation data as Mr. Vignani outlined, we're going to look at the financial and clean energy replacement alternatives, should we go down that road? We're going to meet with Mr. McEver and, and experience the flicker and talk about maybe some mitigation regarding the flicker. We're going to review the contract to see if there's any wiggle room for kiboshing, that's my word, and we're going to look at the costs of turning it off on various, in various impacts, whether it's on a mitigation level or if it's on a complete turnoff. Did I miss anything? Okay. I, for those of you who have participated in this conversation tonight, we really appreciate it, we appreciate your helpful input and this dialogue. We will, we will endeavor to meet your expectations on checking these lists off and finding some way that we can address the real concerns and balance that with our responsibility to the whole town. So with that, I will conclude this section of our agenda at 9:53, and you are all most welcome to continue with us, but we're going to move on to other business, which consists, the next thing would be our liaison reports. Does anyone on the board like to provide us with an update on their committees? I have no idea my notes are. Yes, Ms. Connolly?
K2 here. Yeah, I just want to let people know that CPC had a meeting last week, and I think people have noticed that there is a property on Border Street that is on the Cohasset line, it's known as the Bleakie Property, it's quite large, it's got a beautiful stone wall, meadows, it's quite beautiful. It is potentially for sale, and a group did come in from the Gulf River Association to CPC last week to at least begin the discussions about the property and whether or not CPC could potentially be involved in buying it. It's a quite a big piece of property, it's potentially worth more than we could probably afford, but until the conversations start to be had, you know, we won't know that. But the conversations have started, and in my experience with land, it can take a very long time for these things to come together. I personally don't know what the seller's motivations are in terms of, you know, we were lucky with Mordecai Lincoln that they were interested in conservation and preservation and therefore took, you know, less money than they would have probably been able to get on the open market, but I don't know what the status of Border Street is. I know, Karen, you had mentioned that there are a few groups that are potentially coming, potentially coming forward, but it really depends on what the number is. So, just thought I'd let everyone know that.
Yeah, I am glad you brought that up, and yeah, so the group is, the Gulf Association is done, is the applicant for CPC, that has been stewards of that waterway. Just a side note, the property is currently under 61A, Chapter 61A designation, which is agriculture and farmland or something, which means that they receive a tax rate and in order to get out of that restriction, they must come to the town of Situate and we get a right of first refusal. So I would suggest that we put that on our agenda possibly in two weeks or in four weeks to, I think, I think the best thing is doing an executive session because we need to talk about the potential of a large purchase. Is that, is that the right way to handle it, Jim, in your? He's nodding.
So it would be for the discussion of negotiation of purchased property, so that would be able to come under the executive session.
Okay. Yeah, I think, given that this is, is going to be in place soon, I think I'd rather have that conversation sooner rather than later. Even though it's a CPC application, I think that it's, it's going to come to us as a right of first refusal, so thank you for bringing that up. More liaison reports, Ms. Connolly? No, that's it. Anyone else have something to report in? No. The only thing I will add is EDC is actively putting together sort of their own subcommittees, which they're obviously allowed to do under their, their charge to really sort of beef up the conversation about when people can travel, we'd like them to come travel here, and sort of really focus on tourism. So you hear talk about that, and if people are interested in that, if anyone's still listening, you can contact them about maybe helping with that effort. All right, is that it on liaison reports? Okay. The next thing on our agenda is correspondence. Madam Clerk, have we correspondents?
I did not see any.
Okay, Lorraine.
I saw none.
Okay, I didn't see any either. That leaves us with the approval of the meeting minutes from our last meeting. Does anyone have a motion? I can do it.
Let's see. Move to accept the meeting minutes for the Board of Selectmen meeting on September 8th, 2020.
By Ms. Connolly, thank you.
Am I?
Yep, you're good. And seconded by Mr. Vignani, any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, roll call vote, please, Ms. Devon.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
That would be 5-0 in favor and the motion passes. I will remind the board that normally at this point we adjourn and sign documents, but that will just be adjourning tonight and ask, Lorraine, are there documents that need to be signed tomorrow?
There's just the minutes. A couple of people already came in and checked their mailboxes, the mailboxes have a lot of things in them, I really need you to come by tomorrow if you did not get it today.
Okay, so no documents, but please go visit.
So one document and mailboxes.
Okay.
Okay.
Aye, aye.
Thank you.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Seconded by?
Second.
Sir Vignani and Ms. Connolly, all in favor, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Glad you thought about that. That was 5-0 in favor of adjournment. Thank you very much, everyone, for your participation tonight. It is now 9:59 and this meeting is closed.